Good evening, welcome to the strike at four. We're in the council meeting at six P M. We've got all councilors here and we will do a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the body of the United States of America, to the free calling for which is standing one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
At the table of the head and votes for all the comments, there's anyone online on the audience or I just want you to go in. If you have anything, we'll go ahead and put all the comments. We'll move on to AM fifteen. We've got the winter police department up here. So Chief Franklin, I understand that we have a full department.
We do. Thank you all. Yes, we got a full complement of FPD now. I'm very proud of the group that we have and I just wanted to take this opportunity to introduce each of them. There's little faces here and there are some faces that you may not recognize. I just wanted you to be able to lean into a face. So I think no better way to do it than having come before you and we'll just introduce them. I'd like to start off with Lieutenant Josh Hammond. Josh has been with the Winter Police Department for ten years. He is my second in commanding one third. He does an outstanding job. Second is Sergeant Mike Brown, recently promoted last year to his hiring. He's been with the department for seven years. Another good officer for the PD. Very impressed with his abilities and taking over as night sergeant, taking over that position. Literally, we have Detective Andrew Delaney. Andrew Delaney has been with one third for eight years. Some of you may recognize him, worked the road for many years, just recently promoted to detective and he's doing a great job. We have Officer Drew Webster. Drew has been with the Winter Police Department for seven years. He's presently working the night shift, but he's always been on days and wanted to change, so he's gone to nights and he's stirring things up at night, saw some vehicles and people on camera. Thank you, Drew. We have Officer Darian Nettow. Darian's been with one third for five months. Previously, he, he's been in law enforcement for nine years, but just recently hired from Anderson Scott. So he did work, work for us years ago as an reserve officer. Well, two thousand seventeen, eighteen, somewhere around sixteen, sixteen. So we're very fortunate to have him and his experience, nine years of law enforcement experience coming to one third PD. And we got Officer Cody Perkins. Some of you may stand up or stay standing up. He's been with the department for three years, but he's been a staple around one third his whole life. We stole him from the fire department and Dan doesn't want me down because he always complains about us stealing his people's. Thank you, Cody, for your job. You're doing a job you're doing. We get Officer Mike Cody. Mike's been with one third for three years now. He's been in law enforcement for twenty-three years, previously serving for.
You guys sit down, wait to call.
Probably worked for Pittsfield PD for several years and Savattis PD, and we hired him from Savattis three years ago. He, I called him the ghost because I never saw him because he always works nights, but he is now working days. Drew was now the little star. We got Officer John Stanley, a recent hire. And Agent John Stanley comes to us from Kent Park SO. He has seven years law enforcement experience. He started in Ellsworth back in two thousand eighteen. I think he was twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two, he got the dog, or twenty-one, twenty-one, he got the dog and the dog's been with him ever since and we're very fortunate to have him here. Canine agent is a certified drug dog, tracking dog, yeah, articles. He's not an industrial crawl dog. He loves people and the kids at school, the kids at the schools loving him. And we encourage him to continue, continue on that program through school. Thank you, Miss. And our final one is Officer Noah Pullen. Noah's been with us for four months. He's been in law enforcement for three years. He started out in Orchard Beach. Went to Anderson Scott SO and we're fortunate enough, four months ago, to hire him from Anderson Scott. He's been on the public share for a few days and he's, again, he's young, but he's doing a really good job out there. I just wanted to be able to publicly say how appreciative I am of their job, the job they do and the work, the work they do for our communities. If anybody has any questions of any of them or one cat agent matters.
Do you, do you still do ride alongs?
Yes, we do. You want to ride along?
I might.
She thought it'd be a refreshing change for her riding in the front seat.
Like they used to do it all the time.
Yeah, well, she's had ride alongs in the backseat. We got to ride along with the dog.
I can ask the center from the backseat. Yeah, that's a good thing.
Well, thank you so much for coming in and introducing everybody. It's really nice to put a face to the names and see Agent. I'm so excited. I'm going to tell you what's behind it.
So why don't we have everyone here and there all dressed up in their uniforms? Let's get a team picture.
We can go with that.
Oh, look at him.
Thank you, Mike D R S though.
Oh, wait.
Come and sit.
Yeah, dude.
Yeah, you see what's happening. All right.
All right, on three guys, one, two, three.
Smile as well.
I'm gonna get closer to that hook.
That's what he does when he smells.
When he does.
Smells what?
I did have talks with him those years.
Some break once you get over shy.
They got really quiet.
So cute.
Thank you all so much for everything that you do.
I know. Thank you very much. And I will let you know about the ride along.
You're welcome. Anytime. Anybody's welcome. Appreciate that. Although Roy takes the cruise without on his own.
The joy of life.
The backseat.
Oh, God. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you all.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
She was just gonna ask the chief a quick question.
Team, by six, three, hopefully you're meeting to be five hundred and six, a funding request from the Winter Historical Society, and that's the fifteen hundred dollar request, which came from last year for the presenting and storing of the archival records in the Chatham Library. Any questions or comments from names?
Please, would you like to come to the mic and?
Yeah.
Put these right here for anybody who's not a member.
Oh, you do.
Was that a hint?
Yes, it is.
I couldn't know.
It's a request. Thank you for asking us to make a little presentation. The work is ongoing and has been for the last couple of years. It's slow, it's tedious, it's time consuming, consuming because Beth, the grocer, who was actually kind of half of this, who comes in when she has time to do that. And she usually spends a few hours working on processing all of the items that are currently in boxes. And then she goes through the items, she is writing down what she sees, what she knows about it and a description of it. And then we archive those into special boxes and materials so that they will be preserved for as long as possible. So that is basically what's happening. And unfortunately, it is so slow. I understand that there's twelve boxes we have done to complete. So this is going to be in progress, what we asked us for a while. So, any questions?
I think last time I remember, did you say that our files are left down in the basement? I think you asked. I missed that one first.
What do you mean?
You mean much if you said, I got to. Is it just material stuff like I just talked about?
Yes, the boxes and things are, you know, are very expensive.
Yeah, I have them.
And we have to order them and some of the materials are in boxes that are like this big.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
So I was curious.
Yeah, it's a good question.
No comment though. Before I've already even mentioned that I am the chair of the Historical Society Building Committee and therefore serve on the board. I can accuse myself, recuse myself if people would wish to do, but I feel you know.
I don't have a problem with that.
Good, thank you.
Good. Chair, I'll take a motion.
We'll move to approval of funding for the Winter Historical Society for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, six and the amount of fifteen hundred dollars.
Same.
Any discussion? All in favors? All in favors. Thank you very much. Thank you. It's great. I'm just sorry, I'm so naive to do it in some ways.
You know, the next item involves the fire chief. I noticed he's not here, so why don't I give him a quick call? We can go to the next item.
We will get to item eighteen, discussion in consideration. I have a council code. Comments or questions near council?
No.
And did these come on?
So.
I think exactly which mother.
Yeah, so, so what we did is Shannon had asked us, because we do have a code of ethics for all of our board and committee members, to come up with a draft for the council to consider a code of ethics for itself. And so the MMA served as a resource in that they've got several policies, codes and ordinances on their website related to ethics for elected officials. So what we did is we just kind of went through those and picked what we thought were good examples that that could apply to you folks. And that's what you have before you now. And I think I sent this out to you maybe a couple of weeks ago so that you could, could peruse it. And we're not necessarily looking for a vote tonight unless you, you like what you see before you, but mainly to start the discussion, get some ideas if you want changes in this that we could then
I'm good.
perhaps bring back to you.
I'm good with this. So do you want us to sign it and then give it back to you?
Yeah, we'll give the same thing.
Okay.
Again, a lot of some of the chief were done and said statute and tape.
Yeah, and, and what we did in this, and of course we'll post this online, but we created hot links to all those statutes, just so you folks, anyone else who's interested can access those.
So moved.
Same.
Any special? All in favor? All opposed?
I'm standing.
Standing.
To be honest, I didn't, I didn't move it.
Okay. Do you want this, sir?
Yeah.
Yes. Moving on to you, item nineteen, council attorney, he's harassing, and he's providing.
So this is gonna take about an hour. I just called Dan. He thought we were starting at seven, so he was at his house. We said, I'll be there in two minutes. So if you'd like, I can go ahead.
Do you want to do the minutes now and?
Yeah, we, I mean, we could do that.
And then a couple of other things while we read them.
Yeah, she can do those other things.
Yeah.
All right, so we will move to item twenty, consideration of approval of minutes for January sixth and January twenty-fifth, the twenty twenty-five hour per hour.
You're on the votes in love with me, but I'd like to see, change my vote to yes.
For the last one?
Yeah, the other one.
All right.
Don't worry about it.
Is that what it rules? You like that? All right.
I move that we approve the minutes of January sixth twenty-four and January twenty-seventh twenty-four. Are those supposed to be twenty-five?
Yes.
Okay, so with the amendment that it's twenty-five.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor? Two thirty minutes.
Oh.
Okay. Or Linda?
Yeah.
There's one. Wait.
Wait, entrance.
Yeah. All right, so item twenty-one, interrogation for the appointment. Thanks. Done? And I see the, yeah, Brooks just came in.
Yeah. I will trust.
No, don't worry. So we will hop back into item seventeen, discussion regarding the winter fire department apparatus. We appreciate you coming in today to discuss this in preparation for moving into the budget season.
Yeah, I would have gotten here sooner, but there's so many police cars out there. I had to park away. I'm sorry. Got to throw my date in there. So it's kind of started because Anthony mentioned last week it was a little bit of space and I said, you know, might be a good time to start talking about truck replacement, not essentially because we have a critical issue with our trucks right now, but the current replacement time is about four years. So if we want a truck in twenty twenty-nine, we need to be ordering it now, which is not what I'm here to advocate for, but I wanted to have that conversation just because of that timeframe. They also go up roughly eight to ten percent a year. So saying, you know, we'll wait another year or whatever is, is obviously an option, but the costs inflate from there. So I have a little bit of the information that was requested of me, but quite frankly, I have so much going on this month. All of a sudden, I'm taking two fire service classes for the department for certifications and I'll teach them too. So I am either doing homework or grading homework. So I've been crazy this weekend, but I did get some information and I can hinge this stuff out if you want. A little more pack. And then if you bear with me, I promise I won't talk as much as you do come down.
Send the whole pack.
I think it's the same thing. Oh, no, no.
Oh, wait, you can hang on to that.
It's gonna do things.
You sure? I'm good, I'm good.
Just a little bit more, David, I gave you the other day.
Yeah.
So, so I didn't give you all this information here, but we currently have five pieces of apparatus. Pickup truck, three engines and our, you call it quint, our ladder truck that also can operate as an engine. And as you know, we have a boat, we have a U T V on tracks and we have a couple of other miscellaneous trailers. So the, the thought is we have our truck that technically is up for replacement would be our ninety-nine engine. So it's twenty-six years old. It's not on here. I did look. Odometer on that truck doesn't work, but it's got twenty-eight hundred hours on, on the engine. The, so that technically is really a reserved truck. We use it as a second or third, or even at times for different calls. And then the other truck that is the second oldest truck is our, our ladder truck, the big elephant in the room, which is a hundred foot ladder, but it's also got a fifteen hundred gallon minute pump. The engine holds a thousand gallons of water, the lateral's four hundred and fifty, but it's capable of doing fire attack as well as airwork. The other thing is it carries a lot of ground ladders. Our, our engines carry basically two ground ladders, a twelve foot roof ladder and a twenty-four foot extension ladder. So we have two of those, two engines. Each have that compliment, whereas the ladder truck has thirty-five foot ladder, twenty-four foot ladder, it has three roof ladders. So it has a, and, and the roof ladder is a sixteen footer versus a twelve. So ladder trucks carry more ladders than other trucks do, obviously. It's our first out truck on chimney fires, which is not what it used to be when I started on the department. On April, I'll hit thirty-five years. It's not what it used to be, but we still run five to six structure, chimney fires. One or two of those will be out of town. I think this year we've had four chimney fires, one out of town, I think is correct. So it's first up for that and it's also our first out for mutually aid. It goes to all the other communities. It is requested specifically from Augusta or a ladder truck. And pretty much every other community knows that if they call for us, they're gonna get a ladder truck unless they request something special like a grass fire or a wind fire, we'll send our, our wings pro. And it is our second out truck on any other call, fire alarm, structure fires, that type of stuff. It's the second out truck. The, that truck has twenty-eight thousand plus miles on it and it's got twenty-four hundred hours on it. The trucks, I'm a little surprised at the hours because the trucks idle a lot. They go two miles and they run for an hour. It's kind of the, the life of I never hire a little pickup trucks and a rescue truck. We did go through a couple of engines on our rescue trucks, but it will go literally eighty miles an hour right out of it. Go sit there for three, four days, go eighty miles an hour, for two miles, sit there and idle for an hour and then drive back to the station and shut it off. It's not a great life, some of that equipment, to be honest, but if you plan on bidding on some of our excess equipment, don't think about those kind of. So we also have our primary engine one, which is three years old, four years old, gonna be four years old this fall. That's our primary engine. It goes out to probably seventy-five percent of our calls first, any fire alarms, structure fires, that type of thing. Obviously, as I said, the truck three, our aerial goes out to chimney fires first. Then we have another engine. It's a two thousand nine. It's a smaller truck. Very nicely, very maneuverable, but it's really kind of our brush truck. Has a big pump, twelve fifty, but it's, it only has three hundred gallons of water. It's the first out on grass fires, brush fires. Also, that truck is really handy for trees, power lines now. That's become a major call for the fire department is to go out, clear roads and night, that type of stuff. It's more common to have a storm where we go out to three or four places or sometimes twenty, twenty-five places on a big storm, but it's not uncommon. A little bit of wind comes up, we go out and cut a tree. So sometimes this power line's involved, that's generally why we're sent. And in that case, we have to work with C N B to clear them. Sometimes it's just a tree in the road and we, so we do try to spread the usage out between the newer apparatus. But they all have a function. They all have a certain kind of responsibility. I say that because although our primary engine goes out on seventy-five percent of our call, it can't do us any good on an island, we have a boat. It doesn't do us any good when we have a rom on a snowmobile trail. We need our U T Vs. We've used both of them for that. And it doesn't do us any good when we have a chimney that's twenty feet above the roof of a house because we can't reach it without our air. So our theory is to go down a truck to, instead of just replace the pumper, would be to replace the pumper and the aerial together and have one less truck in fleet, which does have some slightly negative connotations. We would reduce the amount of water that we carry at least to the temporary step. We have on our reported structure fire, Manchester comes with a pumper tanker, twenty-five hundred gallons of water. So even though they are limited staff, they do have a new chief on board, they are meeting with them later in the week and they are getting kind of their ship ready. They are very good about walking, driving in right behind our first engine with a twenty-five hundred gallon tanker. That's all we really expect out of them and that works really well for us. Monmouth also brings a tanker to us. They bring an engine and a tanker and that's, that's the immediate call. Somebody calls in, says my house is on fire. We have two tanker trucks coming from, from out of town. So mutilate being what it is, we bring the ladder truck and generally people that are S C B A certified that go inside the building and fight the fires. Whereas other communities bring us tank water. We don't have a tanker truck. We haven't had a tanker truck for years. The thought might be when we replace another truck in years or whatever down the road, that that might hold more water than our small brush truck that we got, but obviously that's another plan for a little further down the road. The thought is three truck, if you take the pickup truck out of it, you have three trucks, three engine, two engines and a combination ladder truck. Replace them every eight years. That means the truck's twenty-four years old when you get rid of it. Our last ladder truck was taken out of service before we could replace it. We had one on order, but it didn't come in time. We had to take the truck out of placement. I think we went almost a year. Was, it was less than a year, but we had it out of service for quite a while. That truck was thirty-one years old and it got to a point where it was gonna cost way more money to fix it than it was worth that it was. We're not that, that way with the current ladder truck or the current engine. There is some argument for saying the engine only costs us maybe fifteen hundred dollars a year in maintenance and service. Why don't we just keep that truck for the backup of it all? But there's also some argument that we could use a little more space in the station for some of the ladders. Right now we kind of have a boat going one way and a U T V going another way and another trailer going another way. So a little bit of space wouldn't be a bad thing. The other key thing that I know you probably don't like the idea of, but we current, our current engine is what they call a Pierce puck. It's kind of a, not a special setup, but it's designed with a pump out of the way so that there's a lot more room for compartment space, storage space, the space up top that we, we bought it specifically because it's the same length of the older engine, but has like two hundred cubic feet more space to hold equipment and hauling equipment is really a bigger issue than having trucks where we load them up too fast. So my argument would be we can buy a Pierce puck ladder truck. So it's, I literally, other than put another axle on it, it's identical to the truck that we have now. All the switches, knobs, buttons, the pump panel, which is totally different, is exactly the same as the engine. I was explaining it to Anthony one day and again, I'm not trying to drag this out, but I was explaining to him how I bring you on as a branding firefighter. You're gonna spend two hours just driving the truck over four different spells. You're probably gonna spend four to six hours learning how to pump that first truck. Then we take you on a road course that's required by the state to say, yeah, we're good. We've got many, many tests you on your ability to pump it. And then we take out, then I go around that truck to the truck beside and say, let's start all over again. Because he has a different engine, a different truck, a different pump, different ladder. We start all over again. Whereas if that truck had the same pumps, had the same controls, had a lot of the same equipment, we could cut out a lot of those hours of trying to get somebody up to speed on the next truck. I mean, literally, if you I mean, literally, if you join my department with no experience, you're probably gonna spend a year getting trained how to be a firefighter. Then you're probably gonna spend at least another year, if not two, on how to drive all the apparatus, it takes time to get people through this. So having identical equipment. As maintenance concerns, but really a big one for us is training concerns, so. Uh, that's where I kind of get into that, on the following one is we could get. A hundred seven foot aerial that has the exact same setup as our current truck. Saving that time and basically safety, a lot easier to drive two trucks that are identical than a lot of other stuff. One of the other things that we do as a fire department is um. We use compressed air foam, which is. When we spray our water, we have air foam inside of it, it gives more strength. And it's, gives more power to the hose line to put up a fire. It's, it's, I don't wanna say it's a normal idea, there's all, but there are compartments that either swear by it or swear against it. There's, there's really no in-between, and we have made the step. So that two of our three engines, two of our four trucks right now are calves, capable or calves engines, our latest two. So the idea would be to buy, if we got rid of two trucks and bought the one, we would get, give one that's calves, it would pump exactly the same as the other truck. Again, speeds up, training, it speeds up use, it's used better. Would get us all that way, and essentially, we would reduce our overall need for more trucks. Down to three trucks. That's kind of the idea of where I'm going with this, again, my biggest concern for being here is. Just launch out, and we're not talking about tomorrow. But if we wanna talk about four years from now, we need to talk about it today. The second page that I gave you is that little upper lip. Is what we've spent annually to get that ladder truck. On the road, um. That includes regular maintenance, service in the pump, service in the ladder. But it also comes usually with a small laundry list, that truck has to be certified by an independent. Service, independent company comes in and certifies that, that's another fifteen hundred dollars, it's not on here. And that truck, and that, seeing the list of what he comes up with, we then send it to the dealership, to Greenwood Emergency Vehicles. And they. Give us an estimate to fix that stuff, plus anything else they may come up with. I'll get to that in a second, that's the last pages. You'll also see that this November, the truck broke down, we had to have it towed to Portland. It had a two thousand dollar repair with, along with a thousand dollars in towing. Uh, and you'll also see at the bottom of that group, we originally called in our local mechanic that's, that. Is a road mechanic, so in other words, he works out of his truck when he goes around the state. He came in, he fixed a couple of problems that he found, and ultimately said, you need to send us. To the dealer for reprogramming and so forth, which was the two thousand dollars. That cost us fifteen hundred dollars, he made three different trips trying to solve issues with it, and, and quite frankly. You have to be in, in the repair business to understand this, but the more he fixed, the worse the truck got, because it's not to operate the way it's supposed to, but it wasn't. Right, so. We spent roughly, had those out forty five hundred dollars on the latest repair of it broken down. And last year, he just finally remembered to send me the bill, we had upgraded some exterior lighting that was not working. We switched it to L E D and that cost us about three thousand dollars. There are some other small repairs that go on with a truck that's probably not on the list, but I think you can see that in general. As the truck has gotten older, it's gotten more expensive. And you'll also notice on the last sheet, this is what the original estimate was, the last two sheets, was the original estimate from Greenwood. And you'll see right what I told them to fix and what I told them not to fix, one of them was. Um. Rust proofing it, sanding down the frame, then. And rustproofing it for ten thousand dollars, which is probably a great idea, especially in the long term. But uh, we didn't have the budget for it, and um, that's something. That would take a longer conversation, something that would also need to be done. We don't service the truck in the winter with purpose to do it this summer, unless we're gonna use it. And he said he had an exhaust leak uh, for thirty four hundred dollars. You haven't heard that, of course diesel trucks are pretty loud, and we passed inspection. This year, the uh, the garage, the, the truck garage that we used said that is probably. Um. It's possible there's some leaks in there, but I didn't feel that it was bad enough to tackle it at this point, so I guess I made the right decision by holding up on that. And then you'll see on the second page, it was like another twenty eight hundred dollars, some of it's a little bit of repair, body damage or. Backing it into a, a tree or something, there's banging some stuff out back, it's been that way for years, don't worry about it. And um. The cab lift bushings, they greased them off, not sure how long they'll hold up, but that's only in effect, we did, they rock out to work on the engine, so. We did pass on some maintenance stuff, I will tell you that that truck also has trucks. The, the engine two has quite a few spots on it that have rust coming through the body. Uh, we also spent a few years ago about sixteen thousand dollars to redo the underneath of the truck that holds the tank in place, because it rotted out. Um, that was on the ninety nine, so we, the rust is what, this type of age is what gets to it, on. Engine two, it's about, truck three, I'm sorry, I know I'm going fast, so I apologize for. Truck three is an aluminum body, so down one side of the truck specifically, it is, it is uh, the paint's peeling. It's bubbling, you can see that corrosion is getting there, it's not rust, because it's aluminum, but, so essentially both trucks. Starting to push their weight was paint jobs, and I can't imagine anything more. That does less was fighting a fire than painting a truck, it really doesn't, it's. It helps it maybe long term from issues, but it's really not there. Doesn't help them put out any house fires, so.
Can I just say a clarification, Rob?
Yes.
So, I get your proposal, selling engine two, which is the cost.
Yeah.
You were saying that Manchester and Monmouth will have commerce.
They bring us tankers, so that truck holds a thousand gallons of water. Manchester's truck holds twenty five hundred. And Monmouth's truck holds two thousand, so they're bringing water more so than fighting firefighting capability.
Okay, and then looking at selling truck three is our current ladder truck.
Correct.
And replacing it with something that's identical to engine one, is putting a ladder on top of that.
Correct.
But it takes forty to forty-five months to build that out.
Exactly.
So what's the timeframe that you've been looking at, at selling and buying, I mean, to, to not when there's no gap, we're having a ladder.
So, all of it would happen four years from now.
Right.
But if we wanna lock in a price, we do it today.
And what's that?
Hey, don't have to pay a cent.
And how much is that?
It's, right now, it's about one point eight million dollars. Engine one that we bought three years ago was seven hundred thousand dollars, that truck's over a million dollars now, that is the inflation rate. Of fire apparatus. So what has happened, if you really wanna know. Is cities know they have to have twenty fire trucks, and they're only getting more and more expensive. So they're ordering more trucks, because they know the price is only gonna get worse. So all the fire truck manufacturers are getting inflated. With orders, and it's pushing them further and further back, they did get behind because of COVID, but they've caught up. Now they're trying to get caught up with all the cities. It's about one point eight million dollars roughly, we haven't finalized the complete design of it. And the price goes up roughly a hundred thousand dollars a year, so if we say, we don't wanna do it this year, we'll wait next year, another hundred thousand dollars. I'll wait another year, another hundred thousand.
So I, I guess, um. Is there any way of, of aggregating like a bunch of those municipalities, you know, like a, um. Buying group or something?
Well, so, two things on that, first of all, we would buy this through, by, we've done it with our last two trucks. So it's, it's not like we're just saying, hey, sell us the truck, we'll pay whatever. This H G A C, which is Houston Gallaston Acquisition Corporation. Actually has bids and prices on every fire truck in America. So we had, and it saved us about, that wasn't a lot of money, it was less than ten thousand dollars, but it was something like it.
But, but let me, let me clarify, that's a purchasing cooperative, and I think what you're talking about is.
She starts getting mutually paid.
Yeah, I think she's talking about three towns collaborating in order to, to, to purchase a truck.
And I, okay.
Yeah.
Sure. Okay, with it.
Well, here's the engine one.
Engine one's a twenty twenty one.
It is true.
Yeah.
You basically, it's just saying it's identical, excuse me, it's identical to it.
Uh, uh, my theory would be to buy a truck that's identical to that.
To that. Like, put a world specs in that, that's the same as yours, it's.
Oh, the information on engine one?
Yeah.
I didn't give you either. Cause I, I'm sorry, I didn't give you the whole fleet, I can give it to you though, it's not.
I know, I just was kind of curious, because, because really the thing is.
Yeah, I, I went back and forth to whether they give you the whole nut, soup and nuts, I was trying to keep this simple, but. It's not simple, it's talking a little orange and apples, that's why I think it's great to come in early. As far as getting other communities to pay for this, I have absolutely no problem with attempting that. I don't think it's gonna go very far, again, they provide tanker trucks and other agents does it. It's the nature of mutually, we provide stuff to them, they'll bring it to us, but. And, and I'm not gonna say it hasn't been done, there are communities where a couple of towns have gotten together and bought a single truck together or something along that lines. Our best bet would be Monmouth. Uh, we work heavily with Monmouth, Monmouth works pretty heavily with us.
Well, well, let me ask you this, who's buying the bigger truck?
Oh, we're buying the bigger truck.
Okay, so we're buying the bigger truck and they're using the bigger truck, so they're not, they're not, I mean, they're not.
Yes.
They got the small.
Yes, but at the same time, we don't have a tanker, and so anytime we need a tanker.
But what's more important, I mean, what's, what's it more expensive?
Well, that's just, that's kind of where I lead it to, if it's a boat rescue, I need a boat. If it's a structure fire with a house on fire and it's not in the hydrant district, I need five or six tanker trucks. I'm following the Reedfield mutually, every call requires different stuff. And they're not used on every fire.
I get that, but, well, I guess my question is, you know, who's, I mean, if we're buying the bigger tanker truck. And everybody's using it. And they're buying these smaller apparatus, correct me if I'm wrong, then. That's, that's to me seems a little bit.
Well, I mean, Monmouth has six hundred thousand dollars, it's two, um, only because they bought their trucks are a little bit older than ours. But every town has those, um. Auburn just bought a two point one million dollar, just took a delivery of a two point one million dollar tower. Farmington's ordered the same tower, two point one million, that's, it's the going, Christ Gardner has one, Augusta has one. But they're ten miles away, and. Generally, you want a ladder truck coming in really quick, because you start laying out hoses, you start laying out other trucks, you need that truck there. Where, where, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and next we have, um, questions for Ryan out here.
What's the cost of a tanker truck? Just take comparison.
Uh, a straight tanker without a pump on it? Probably four hundred to five hundred thousand dollars, if you put a pump on it, it'd probably a little bit more.
So it's like five to one, probably. Five.
Probably four.
A good strong four to one.
A good strong four.
That's what I'm saying, but, the, 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 the thing is too, is if, you know, isn't there. Okay, everybody needs, we need this type of truck, we need this type of truck, we need this type of truck, wouldn't it make more sense if. Everybody's using all of this stuff, all these towns, if we all chip in and. Buy this stuff, and then everybody can use it, rather than spend the money and buy a one point eight million dollar truck. When this town over here is spending four hundred to buy theirs.
That's what you call nationalization.
Yes.
That was how, uh.
Yeah.
But I mean, I, I, what?
How do you get? This smells a whole lot to me like the ambulance story that we had last week. Where we're subsidizing the other community.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's like, it's, it's.
Uh, we still have, you have to remember, reason town on fire, a ladder truck.
Right.
Still a bill. In having a several story tall building. Um, correct me if I'm wrong.
I mean, that's usually what most people say to me, is geez, do we have a building that's a hundred and seven feet in the end? Well, if I go to your two story house, I'm parked on the road, I'm gonna use all a hundred and seven feet to reach your house. It's reach that we buy a hundred, even I can buy a seventy five foot ladder, but I wouldn't be able to use it half the time, because it won't breach. Fire enough to do it, so for the extra. Whatever it is, probably seventy five thousand dollars, it's worth the extra twenty five feet, so I have to get further. We have a lot more buildings of that size than. Well, we're a bigger town than Monmouth, or a bigger town than Manchester, or a bigger town than Reedfield, we have more buildings than any of those, so that's. Kind of the need.
Ignore it, but um, ten years from now. What, where do you see this department as far as recruiting and sustainable?
Uh, it's a new battle every day.
Right, ten years, so.
So let me, let me.
Better ten years from now?
Let me put it to you this way. Your answer to what you wanna do costs millions of dollars. Your only answer to us volunteer, I am asking gentlemen to stop what they're doing, whatever they're doing at their work. Maybe they're having Thanksgiving dinner, maybe it's Super Bowl, the Patriots are, we got nachos, whatever.
Probably forgot that, but you know what, they were in and out in, within half time, so.
But roughly, we bring.
Oh my god.
Eight to twelve people to a fire. That were all doing something five minutes earlier, totally different from that, sixteen dollars an hour, that will go out, but sixteen dollars out. If we can't get them volunteers, sixty five, seventy five thousand dollars a week. To have one firefighter on duty, generally it's a shift of four, twenty four hours a day. You, if you wanna have three guys on a fire truck, you now need twelve people to work four shifts. At seventy five thousand dollars a piece, there was some, you submit some talk about, let's legalize Winter and Monmouth. Makes great sense, go ahead and do that, start at a hundred thousand dollars a year. I'm not gonna take on the responsibilities of running the Monmouth Fire Department for eighteen thousand dollars. And I will guarantee you that the Monmouth Fire Chief isn't gonna come over here and run the Winter Fire Department for another ten thousand dollars. You'd need to hire a full-time guy, give him a vehicle, insurance and pay. The cheapest thing you have operating in this town is for me to show up with eight to ten guys at fifteen dollars an hour on a moment's notice.
But, but I guess, but, but we, we, but.
I think what, I think any chief that you're gonna hire in the future is gonna require. A hell of a lot more money than I'm getting paid, even if it's just a twenty hour a week or something like that. So I think you're gonna start working your way that way, so the more you can do. Having a fitness room at the fire station gives you a full-time firefighter for free. Went up there tonight, there was two guys working out, if a fire call came in. They jump in a truck and they go, that's two firefighters for free, sitting at the station doing fitness. At literally no cost to us, anything we can do to promote and recruit and make firefighters feel wanted. And appreciated in their job, which is all they want, you know, we're not doing it for fifteen, sixteen dollars an hour, give me twenty bucks an hour, someone put it for that. If you, anything we can do to support those people is just gonna save you hiring people in the future.
I don't want, let me finish yet.
I'm sorry.
I know.
I didn't mean to go on my soapbox, it just became.
I, I do appreciate the, you know, the volunteers and all that stuff, where does a one point eight million dollar fire truck come into play at that? How does that affect the volunteers or, or any of that stuff?
It allows us to do our job.
Okay.
So one of the things would be, if I have to go to a house. And get to the roof of it with ground ladders, I need probably three or four firefighters to throw all those ladders to do it. I pull up with a ladder truck, I can set it over there with one person, and theoretically, you could climb up to the top of that. It cuts down the amount of staff that I need to do that job, now that might only do that six or eight times a year, but that's. Helping that staff do that, again, the one point eight million, by the way, is over twenty four years. And they're only gonna get more expensive, it's not, by the time we buy our ex-fire truck, it's probably gonna be one point eight for the smaller truck.
Well, it's one point eight over, over twenty four years, but we've already got. Two on the rolls and that's, that's the same right now, right?
I'm sorry.
We've already got two fire trucks, we're banking more right now already, right?
I don't believe it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think, yeah, they're all.
Actually, right now, what we did, I don't have to double check this, but my request last year. We were paying off the pickup truck.
I see the pickup.
I asked for that money to go into a reserve account, an extra fifty thousand dollars. And, and with no increase in anything, that's what we're paying, and to do it next year. Up to a hundred thousand, so we would actually bank at least two hundred and fifty thousand, not three hundred thousand dollars, but this truck shows up, which is important. Cause you can prepay for the truck and bring the price of it down. But it makes much more sense to prepay like. A year out, you, they have to start buying equipment to go on a truck, they have to buy an engine, which is a hundred thousand. We could give them that money, and they would say, okay, for doing that, we'll save you eight thousand dollars on the overall price, it doesn't make any sense to do it now. But there is a chance to do that, there will be an opportunity to do that in the future.
I would love, and then the, I need. But what, but my, I, I, I get the regionalization, and I'm, I wasn't referring to that.
Yeah.
But what I was referring to is, I mean. Isn't there some way that we could? Get some of these towns to pay a little bit more towards this type of a apparatus? I mean, it only, it only, it only to me, they're not gonna go out and buy this thing. You know, they're not gonna go out and buy it themselves, so why wouldn't that? Why wouldn't they give us? Something towards it? I think that that benefits our communities. You know, they're, we're, they're basically telling us, you go buy the more expensive truck and we're gonna sit here and buy these, these support trucks. Or for different types of fires, I I just think it. It.
You certainly can try, I'm just being realistic. You can certainly try, but it's.
I just think it makes only sense. It it's if they're, if they want us to to buy this truck, I mean.
Well, this is true, Linda, but you don't serve on the Reedfield Select. And so, and so people.
Are they gonna go out and buy a one point?
No, but what I'm saying is convincing the select boards in Reedfield and Manchester and Wayne. At all, Monmouth is gonna be a gargantuan task to to convince them to willingly contribute. A significant amount of money towards the purchase of apparatus. It just, it it just is. The the few conversations that I've had thus far with everyone paying their fair share. Of, um, the ambulance service and the dispatch service makes perfect sense, right? But there's still resistance. There's still resistance, and so.
Well, then maybe we'll have to trim back what we serve. I mean, if if we can't serve some of these communities, if they don't wanna pay, then they can go, you know, they may have to go.
You could do that, but also be aware that they're not gonna send their apparatus and firefighters when we need them. If if we do that, so that just gets into a spitting match that I don't think benefits. Anybody.
Um, yeah, you know, I really don't have a question, kind of quick, quick statement. Um. When I, when I first walked into that, um, new fire station. Um, I still have a lot of problems, fire towel, top, by the way, but anyway. You know, I look in there, I see exercise rooms, I see showers, I see bunk beds. Um, you know, and I'm like, holy crap, what we spent all this money for? Bottom line, is the dance right? We have a volunteer firefighter. Um. Uh, department. And if we had to pay for that, it it would, the cost would be unflueable. And anything that we can do, including shiny engines, climbing ladders on engines instead of, you know, forty foot. Uh, ground ladders, uh, did an exercise, you come and go. Uh, a bunk bed to crash in and a shower to take it, I think that we're, um. Doing the right thing, but I do, I don't like my, my, and nothing, anyone, anybody else. Okay, and I like paying for exercise, probably now, or paying for bunk beds and showers, okay, but all these things. Community departments where the volunteer firefighters should proud that they're part of it. And and all that in all sport and and it enables recruiting. And, uh, I think, yeah, on that score, it should really evolve well.
Um, if you don't want me to just clarify it, but just to be honest, all the fitness equipment is bought by the Fire Apartments Association. You pay for that, I don't know, just so you know, the room is obviously yours, it's a private building.
Well.
Just so that those things don't get out of the.
Yeah.
We do, if I try to be pretty judicious that if it's something that doesn't help put fires out, we buy it ourselves.
I know, I know you are, but I just try to remind everybody that. Um, you know, we we could be penny wise. And, uh, a dollar show at the Manchester.
Well, Andy, I I agree with you as far as the appreciation of the volunteer fire department. And and all that stuff, and and I have no problem with any of the gym, with the showers, with. Any of that stuff. I I have no issue with that. My only thing is, my biggest thing is, can we make this ladder truck? Ultimately, at some point, we're gonna need work. Can we get more lights out of that? It's my question.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's a. My argument would be yes, but I think it would need some refurbishing, it would need that. The city of Augusta sent all their trucks out to get the bottoms of them undercoated and sanded a few years ago. They they were having it done in a place they were running between fifty and seventy five thousand dollars a truck. Not just spraying on a little goop like these guys were kinda talking, a full sand down refurbification and all that, plus a paint job. I mean, to refurb that truck is probably three hundred thousand dollars. That's how we would get longer life out of it. Um, I'm not saying four years from now, the truck's not gonna run. I'm just saying we have to think four years out. We don't want something to happen to that truck and all of a sudden say, we need one tomorrow. Or we need one in a year, cause they don't count that.
Do you, one question, Matt, do you do any, and I asked Andy one question. The end of the small department, the same thing, do you do any sort of rust return?
No, just what's done to them for the fact, we get them, we do rust proof when we buy them, and we're very good the. About washing the underneath and the the radiant heat up there really keeps things dry and clean. But we don't, I haven't added any additional, like they asked for ten grand, I'm more than happy to do that, I just.
But wouldn't it be a lot less than that than just even if we just clean them, spray them with. Fluid film or wax oil, like there's something.
I'm not sure.
Wouldn't it be a lot less than that to get them, even the people I hear bringing in to with these guys? I mean, you're talking cleaning it down, they're gonna P O R, which is paint to them. You know, they gotta clean it down, sand it down, paint it for ten grand.
Well, they're doing, they said they were putting on.
On top of it, yeah, well, wax. Wouldn't it be, wouldn't it be something that we should look into year after year to, is it annual treatment?
It's it's definitely not a bad idea. Like I said, a third engine rusted out, a blur engine rusted out.
I mean, that the the cost of equipment.
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, if if we can.
Police cars. With the cost of everything going up. And also, we get quite honestly, the quality, you know, the ambulances, police cars. The quality of them, the life expectancy of them is going longer, we've got to run them longer.
Yeah, I mean, nobody's running, there's nothing in this town that's twenty four years old that we're trying to get five more years out, I can tell you that, I mean, now. But everything is replaced, way before that. But at the same respect, there is more we could do to try to get longer as far as that type of stuff, but. Uh, it's not in my budget, and honestly. I feel like if I came to you and said I needed a hundred thousand dollars to rust proof all my trucks, you know, I'll be throwing the same stuff back at me. I like the fact that it's your idea, cause now I can say, you agree with me, we should do some of this stuff, so I don't.
Well, I've done a lot of that and I can't imagine a hundred thousand dollars to, just to spray out. A, uh, wax oil or a glue film or something like that underneath any of that.
Well, I was saying if you get them all, but they they, that was the price that I got from Augusta buyer, not from the, not from the.
The goal for you to say pickup or, um, single X L truck is under four hundred bucks. That to clean it out and spray it with, uh, fluid film or something like that each year.
I don't think you can give a count on for that, but roughly, I mean, that for a car.
You send them to be on day long, I'll do them all day long.
I was gonna say, my, my daughter just had a price done for.
So, um. Dan, thanks for coming, by the way.
Yeah, no problem. This was actually my idea, believe me.
Yeah, he subjected himself to this.
I thought about it for a while, I'll tell you that.
So, you know, this is my experience in the council so far, is if you brought an idea that said a hundred thousand dollars, gonna save us one point eight billion dollars. I think everybody on here would be on board with it, even if it was for three trucks. Um, just, you know, looking at cost benefit ratio, I think we're all very interested in 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 running the numbers. Getting into my completely value wise, uh, everything in town. Do you have, do you have any idea, let's say, out of Reedfield, do you know what their next of engines are?
They don't, to be honest.
And and likewise, they probably don't know who, but we're to the.
Uh, not much.
Maybe like here and there, it's not like.
Just on the street.
Just on the street stuff. So, you know, we're not sitting down together and and really thinking about in this region, you know, what what is it we're gonna need in the next ten years? The ladder truck, food, or a tanker in, uh, Manchester or Wayne. They, I think if we did approach that situation and start really being a little bit more strategic in the region. We could probably come up with some, some ways of being a little bit more equitable. Or at least, you know, kind of having a better idea timelines, cause I don't see in this, cause this truck, say, we do get, you know, this twenty year truck. Will we be able to sustain a volunteer part of twelve years? If we look at current trends, there's a good chance that's not gonna happen. So we have to start thinking along along those lines. Um, when we start making these choices, but I do agree with Roy and I think it it could probably worth looking at what a good cost to to rehab that truck. And I mean, to really do a thorough rehab, um, that would extend the life. Um, to that value, uh, and get a good cost as with that.
I think on truck three.
Truck was, yeah, and then as far as, yeah, going down a truck. Um, you know, obviously, that's an operational decision, but you feel that three trucks will be. Is it just because that's what you can sustain with your membership or?
Well, that's kind of it. I mean, we're not gonna, we're not gonna bring five trucks to a call.
Right.
Very often, I mean, especially since you consider that first engine goes up with three or four people. The it's it's interesting, and again, I don't wanna belabor this, but part of what we did when we bought engine two in nineteen ninety nine. Is we got out of the mentality of everybody driving to the scene in a pickup truck and somebody, one guy bringing a truck. And we got into, we go to the station, we get dressed, we get our equipment on in the truck as we're responding. So that first engine goes up with three people on it. So if I'm bringing eight to ten, a big structure fire, I'm bringing maybe fifteen. Biggest call we had the other day, Sunday night, we had fifteen guys in, and that's pretty big for us. Six of our people are full time in other towns, so there's always half a missus. But anyways, we're, you know, you put three on the first truck, the lab truck should go all with three as well. That's most of your crew on two trucks, so the other trucks are for different calls. The only thing. Is every so often, we have a couple of trucks break down simultaneously. It seems like when one breaks down, another breaks down. Now you're getting a little thin. Um, the other side of it would be that we would lose some water supply. I I would be happier if our other engine out was more like an engine tanker, pumper tanker like Manchester has it. Could do those two roles, that it could be an engine, which that one is, but it only will stream it out in the water, it'd be nicer to have more. But then, of course, the size is much bigger and they get harder to drive. I I I think for the most part, those three engines are gonna do. And I'll tell you, when you kind of talk about a tree down, the pickup truck is awesome. I mean, we can fly out the pickup truck, we fly out in the smaller truck. And we can tow trailers with it, I mean, this, we didn't know how much we missed the pickup truck till we announced, so. Those four trucks with the pickup, I I do feel that we're not cutting. Ourselves, especially with Mutual Aid coming in pretty quick.
So, so can I just mention one thing that? To address your question, Aaron, one of the many things I appreciate about Chief Brooks is he is very price conscious. I mean, he realizes that. The the, you know, replacing that engine is going to be expensive, and so what can he do to make it? Possible, not only to you guys, but to the taxpayers as well. And so it is easy in a position like his to be looking at building a kingdom of some sort. And he's not doing that in any sort of form or fashion, so so I do think, you know, give him a little credit for just wanting to ensure that. What he's proposing is palable both politically and financially.
Couple of questions, Roy, did you say that that ten thousand dollars for the, uh, the undercoat, is that expensive?
Well, based on what they, I'd say that, but what they're doing, that ten thousand dollars, when it says, you know, just a brief description. They're actually painting the truck, they're not just undercoating it as well. Yeah.
I will, I will be honest with you and say, we send the ladder trucks back to the dealer and they are. Probably the most expensive place to repair, but it's because we've had issues with other contractors that weren't the dealer. No different than the thing that I brought a guy in and I ended up having to send it to a different place.
Right, I I remember you saying that because, well, the the thing is, is why don't we just get it done? I mean, if 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 this is, if if it's showing signs of corrosion, I agree with you, we get the damn thing done.
Yeah, but what I was mentioning, it's preventative.
Well, yeah, that too, but I mean, now it's, now it's showing the signs, now you've got to fix it.
Yeah, well, really, it depends on how bad it is, right?
It is, and I honestly don't know.
If it's actually got the holes in it, all of the brain, it was something of that nature, and then. Yeah, we we get about as much as we can, but really, what needs to happen, I.
I agree with the preventative stuff, yes, I totally agree with that.
We need to get.
I totally agree with that.
Something rough about it.
No.
My, this, what they're talking about here is, uh, best I can tell, P O R fifteen is a paint, it's a, it's a, like a frame paint.
Right.
But so in order to do that, you really need to get in there, wash it, clean it, sand it. Scrape it, needle scale, whatever you gotta do to remove all the debris, then you can paint it, it's all a work and just.
Well, so is this a good price?
We we could try to shop it, I don't know how many.
Okay, so my question is, now that we know that it needs to be done, why don't we take care of it? I'm okay with taking this out of surplus and getting this done.
Yeah, I think my, and we turned in enough money last year that would have paid for.
Let's just get it done, I mean.
Budget is about sixty, seventy, eighty thousand dollars. So spend ten thou, I mean, the truck somewhat kills us when it's eleven thousand dollars as it is, so I turned around and. Budgeted eight grand to fix that truck, it was eleven thousand, but I threw another ten on it, you know.
Try to get it.
Part, you've got everything taken care of that needs to be done.
Definitely any safety or even a little extra, as far as I'm concerned.
Right.
Yeah, but you already got most of this done.
That's all done, everything's done. Yeah, that was in the eleven thousand that we spent this year.
What I'm saying is.
And I I honestly believe, I I I do have quite a lot more, but I honestly believe we could spend ten thousand dollars to do this lab truck. And I'd still be in the black at the end of the year, but I just. I'm not gonna really make that kind of decision about somebody else understanding what I'm doing or why I'm doing it.
Okay, so the the other thing is, I'm gonna say is, I would like a discussion at a future point in time. About all of this, the ambulance, the fire, every, all the, you know, all of this stuff. And the fact that we're sharing some of these services with these towns. I don't think it should be on Winthrop's back for all, some of the stuff, all of it. We need to figure out based on population or whatever it is, what these towns can contribute.
We're, we're already working on that.
Okay, cause I'm just saying is, to me, it's it's just, I'm not, I'm a ta- taxpayer in this town. And I don't wanna be subsidizing other taxpayers for stuff in in other, so that's why I'm saying, so I just think we need to, we need to. We need to figure it out, but we need to approach these towns and say, here's the total cost of this stuff. We need to do some cost sharing.
And we're, and again, we're working on that, but but I want everyone to be clear eyed about it, is it's not gonna happen in one fell swoop.
They're already paying for EMS dispatch.
Not, not enough, Dave.
No, 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 no.
And I also would say that.
And I'm not.
My, it used to be, I don't know about today, but it used to be that what they paid in for the ambulance. Went towards the the operational budget that year, so I'm not sure that a lot of money was ever being set aside to replace the ambulance.
Well, that's, that's, that's a whole other killer risk.
Yeah, that's.
I'll make you one, alright. I, I didn't have time to do that, I'd have to go back and look. I would guess. Probably less than fifty, probably. In town, probably forty to fifty, another twenty out of town.
Twenty out of town, that's for the year.
Out of two hundred and twenty five calls.
Okay, um, maybe, uh, man, questions, you're talking about replacing the ninety nine and the two thousand four, right?
Correct.
So you're just gonna get rid of those two.
Yeah.
At actually at this cost, seeing what you have that, it's the cost on top of this.
Correct, it's a, it's a couple, just, just the engine, which gets very little use and gets very little maintenance, I mean. Doesn't need a lot of maintenance. It's, it's probably still two or three thousand dollars a year just to keep that running, we we would. Get a, not a lot, but we would get rid of that.
So, um, next question is, some of the dangers is lots. I mean, do you strictly go down certain rooms, pardon me, you can't all set in homes?
Not very often, not as much, even Camp Road, we can get down most of the time. Honestly, our restriction is can we reap? That's why going to a smaller, cheaper livery. Yeah, we get down most of them. Not, I was like I said, we can get into every place we wanna go, but.
Um, yeah, another question is, can we do by a new truck? And what we can get become that ten thousand dollar cost to maintain it each year? I was like, and where's, where's the point with the bottom frame of the truck? You get three years of maintenance?
So, if you look at, we spent in twenty twenty, twenty three hundred dollars on it, which I'm gonna argue was a low year, but still. I mean, that's probably just doing basic maintenance, oil changes, ladder service, pump service, pump testing, some of which is required by the state of Maine.
So it's still, it's still could be maintenance on the new truck.
But it's gonna be less than.
Your car.
That's what I'm saying, just need to purchase.
Initially, I would say it's, it's probably a good, at least ten years to fifteen years before you really start running into. And it's not gonna be every year, you might run into something one year and next year it's not so bad.
So what do we do with it? What do we do with the surplus trucks? Like I'm saying, I only, you know, I only use surplus vehicles, I know what it was. Is, yeah, I value it at any of those to sell this truck, the other crap, it's not here in the house.
So the engine, the last engine we sold, we got about five thousand dollars for it, which actually surprised the living. So the engine, the last engine we sold, we got about five thousand dollars for it, which actually surprised the living. Right, I mean, cuz we've been getting a thousand, fifteen hundred dollars for. I, theoretically, the ladder truck, if it stays in maintenance shape. I'd like to think it's worth twenty-five or thirty thousand dollars, but I, I don't know that for a fact. But, you know, that sounds like a lot of money, but in comparison to what we're. There is value in them, but it's relatively small.
So, I think this is the sort of item that if we put it on that website, you're gonna reach a much larger audience compared to probably how we've sold surplus items. And I think that you could see an increase of sold for, just by reaching a larger audience. Yeah.
No, absolutely.
It, 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 it's not as much as you might expect it to be.
Is there like more life expectancy on the ladder truck than we said there's much or?
Yeah, fully, um, like I said, I would shoot for eight year replacement, which means three trucks. I'm taking the pickup out of the puzzle, out of the puzzle, eight years a truck, that's twenty-four years.
Yeah.
Um, you know, it's not to say you couldn't stretch it out longer, I think Roy's probably correct and I won't ever say that again. Then that, you probably, in order to really do that, you need to start early, you stay on it a little bit more, so you're probably gonna spend a little bit more earlier.
Yeah, I, I guess one line of questioning is kind of a real question, is there any opportunity for like, is it the, the new trucks of what, twenty twenty-one?
Twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, so is there any opportunity to have, uh, that similar amount of last, you know, four or five years used? Is there any concept, is there any sense that you could use the longevity issue?
Four or five years old is probably difficult to find. I'm not saying it's impossible, it's, it's not gonna be. Uh, and it's gonna be hard to get one that would be identical. You can buy a used engine, but it's probably not gonna be identical and it's.
Okay.
That kind of earliness, you know, a lot of years, a lot of towns might get rid of a truck in ten years, big cities and stuff.
Yeah.
They gotta have more usage.
Yeah, yeah, no, that makes sense. Is there, so if I guess, do a back to train then, is there any risk for us, uh, if we do order the truck five years out? That is different than the truck we have now in current time?
Well, I mean, in all honesty, there's probably gonna be a knob or a switch that's a little bit different anyways.
Yeah.
But essentially, it's gonna have the same panels, it's gonna have the same dash. Uh, that cab that we have on that truck is not very old, and you know, like, the, 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 that design. Came out six or eight years ago, so I'm thinking they're gonna probably have it for another ten years anyways. Um, the POC model is a very popular model for them, that's not going anywhere else. I, I, I don't, I don't think that's an issue.
Okay, I know, I was more curious about the juice anyways, just because if you get a car, car that was similar, I didn't say. Using this, you use as much, you don't, it's assumed, didn't versatile.
No, I, I get you, that, that, there are options that, that, our previous ladder truck, just because you brought it up. Our previous ladder truck, we bought fifteen years old, we replaced the engine, we replaced the rear end, we replaced parts of the ladder once. And when the, when the, where the ladder connects to the chassis of the truck is when they said it's not worth fixing anymore. So we almost bought that truck twice by the time we got it out. It got to the point where if you get firefighter of the year, you had to drive that truck and break something, and then you get firefighter of the year.
No, no, thank you, yeah, I'm just kidding, so it's awesome. So, so Dan, one last thing is, you know, okay, we're, we're right, we're gonna give you a hard time.
No.
When we talk about mutual, and I'm all for it, and I'm just wanting to get that split for our main estate, man. We seem to have, in this town, some kind of subordination and some other thing, but a bit of understanding is. We seem to have a lot of expensive items for mutual aid versus the other stuff that we have. We gotta follow, it's pretty expensive, I mean, I think, you know, we've got one part ready, because you said, I'm gonna start, you know, they have. Well, and, and, and you know, and get, we've got that now, getting ladder truck, which would be probably another more expensive item for mutual aid. Um, I, I, I do understand your, your take, it's like, we have a lot of work to regionalize us, but it's something, if you think it's. Such a smart thing to do when we're regionalizing, it's a lot of, and all, it's, yeah, each one they look at that. As we move forward in, uh, in Georgia, that, that's costing so much money, that. The, the power of having multi-communities, it's something, just kind of get back to that, when we get, we get that back and, you know. We, in whatever, in years, but I think less than years, a smart thing to look at, especially when we're sending, you're having a hard time, it's a problem. You know, like, I don't like, it's gone, it's, it, it must have been, at least. Twenty, twenty trucks, I mean, twenty people standing out there, a little guy, you know, two fire trucks, anything else, I'm like, wow, they gotta be it.
They, their recruitment, they, they've done very well, they have, about, almost twice as many members as we have. Not necessarily all interior certified, but they just have a lot of.
No, I, just something off on.
That's not, we work really well.
That's what I'm saying, I just feel like this, this is some good U T D A to start some discussions. Not saying it's gonna happen, I think it should be some good discussion to happen on this. Um, because again, we have some, we have a nice, beautiful, but that's the point, you know, you said, you got a fire building, we got. These trucks and we got these trainers, we got all the stuff, but we might be able to do something very well with another community, uh, providing some.
So Dan, in my understanding though, you think that if we go that route, regionalization, we're probably looking at full time firefighters as opposed to.
I think you're, you're starting with a full time chief. Somebody has to come in and start the process. Um, I'm, it's probably inevitable at some point.
Yeah.
But the longer, maybe it gets to a point where it's better to do it sooner than later, um, I would. I, I would, I would not be against that happening. But I think it's gonna cost you more upfront before you start to see those savings, yeah.
Yeah, a- and again, Jim, I'm not, I just wanna make that clear, I'm not booing your idea at all.
You got two fire chiefs, you got two fire chiefs in a month, and you know, one year, and, and months, you split that cost, and it would be increased for the whole time. Five teams, it would make sense, as a director, the whole thing, it'd be just like you, or the, you know, uh, uh, the police chief, you know, and then. If it's not, it'll be on that, and you have to, you know, if you thought you approved, the eventual thing. In, in the end, it makes you save it, it's in that whole thing, because you're now saving a cost of equipment wise, to building wise, maybe it's wise. So, it, it may be saving to the end point, maybe a cost up front at X, but in, in the end, it won't work like you're there in. It might, yeah, I'm not gonna share it across all, making these.
But I think Aaron was on point when he asked about sustainability, because eventually, we'll have, we'll not learn.
I think you need.
It probably will be more regional in nature at that point, simply because every community can't afford to do that.
Yeah, I think you need all communities to decide they need to do.
Correct.
This group might have a great idea, that's my. But if they're running into issues, we're running into issues, that's when you can start to get.
Yeah.
Things happen.
It's show them in the month, we show them the saves, they'll change it too.
Or they just, they're desperate to, you know.
Yeah.
Chief, I appreciate you coming in, and, uh, this has been a welcome hearing so far. Uh, and knowing a couple of games was just inspiring at some point in the future, probably through Anthony, I'll probably ask for a breakdown like, like of, um.
I can, I can give you more information on calls, Anton, whether.
Yeah, like calls into towns and just having an understanding of, uh, when firefighters show up to a call. Who's paying them, and then, uh, is it their hometown department, and the same thing with the pumper trucks and things too, so just to have that kind of analysis. Moving forward, uh, I do want to thank you for breaking down this analysis, I do remember, I think it was two bucket cycles ago, you did comment, it was so. Update on this, and so I've been anticipating this for the last two years, on this, about the ladder recall.
I'm sorry to keep you held up for two years, I didn't realize that.
I appreciate it, uh, and it's interesting, so what I took right here, um, with the selling of engine two and truck three. That'll be interesting as we go into the bucket cycle to understand how much those are expected to receive.
And in all honesty, I would take that money and put it right in the reserve account towards the next.
I knew it was, yeah, offset as a next one, so then, uh, understanding when the engine one is currently a twenty twenty-one.
Correct.
When you'd be purchasing another one, an identical to it, would that be a twenty twenty-six if we were to approve?
It'll be twenty twenty-nine.
Twenty twenty-nine.
So it was twenty-nine.
Okay.
They wouldn't need, they got so many trucks in front of it, they don't want any trucks, they'll, they'll take that one along the building, it's all the ones in front of it. They sold four hundred and eighty of them two months ago and one month, I mean, that's just how, it's, did they sell five thousand of these things a year? That's the, and because normally, if it was really replacements, I go, I would need to be here for two, one years, but because of the stretch, I'm just bringing up.
Yeah, but, but I think this is a good precursor conversation to our capital improvement.
Yeah, yes.
Um, to program conversation during the.
And Anthony's very nervous you're gonna go home early tonight, so shit, just.
I knew there was no chance of that, Chief.
I see you, so.
I'll give some more stuff to you.
Thanks.
Awesome, thank you very much, I appreciate it. So we will move back to item nineteen for manual training and harassment prevention.
Yeah, so.
Thank you, Chief.
So just, uh, briefly while I, uh, make a change here to share my screen. Um, state law is that, uh, any employer that has more than fifteen employees should be engaged in this sort of training on an annual basis. I don't know that that's been the practice here in Winthrop, but it is now. And so, uh, you are among the last employees, you do draw paychecks from the, uh, from the town to undergo this training. And it's obviously also a best practice, so I'm going to share my screen here. Sure.
I had, I, I had had it through legislature.
I think it all do, and I just, just wanna give you a next slide, if you can. I want to, is there, is there a talks to this?
No. No, this is.
I don't care, there was a cost.
No, this is just part of our MMA membership.
I, I got mine through legislature.
Yeah, we have, so I do, pretty interesting.
Just got some jazzy, snazzy music.
Turn the lights down.
Sure.
We will be taking you through today, of course. After completing this course, you will be able to recognize and address all types of workplace harassment, including sexual harassment and retaliation. And understand that sexual harassment will not be tolerated.
Thirty years as an innkeeper. Teach you how to keep your nose.
By talking about discrimination and the laws that protect you from harassment. Despite continued efforts, workplace harassment continues to be a problem in our society. Over the years, a variety of laws have been put in place to protect individuals from different types of discrimination and harassment in the workplace. But preventing harassment requires more than just making sure we don't break the law. We need to constantly assess what it means to be professional in a changing workforce. The purpose of this training is to set forth a common understanding about what is and what is not acceptable in our workplace. By learning how to recognize and address inappropriate behavior, you can help stop and prevent harassment, including sexual harassment. Employers are legally required to provide you with a workplace free from discrimination and harassment. To ensure all organizations actively prevent discrimination, federal and state laws set minimum expectations for workplace behavior. And hold employers accountable for meeting that.
Over here?
Yeah, right.
Because it's just wrong.
Tell you so that the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty is a key federal law that allows employment discrimination against any applicant or employee. Based on their membership in one of the protected classes, including race, color, religion, sex. Including sexual orientation or identity or national origin. The Equal Employment Opportunity Commission, or E E O C, is a federal agency created to enforce workplace discrimination laws. The term discrimination includes discriminatory practices as well as acts of harassment.
Why, right through.
In this section, you'll learn to identify what behaviors count as sexual harassment. Sexual harassment is a form of discrimination that violates Title Seven of the Civil Rights Act and the Main Human Rights Act. Sexual harassment refers to both harassment of a sexual nature. Defined as unwelcome sexual advances or other visual, verbal, or physical conduct of a sexual nature. And harassment because of sex, or actions that create an intimidating, hostile, or offensive work environment. Based on expectations regarding an employee's sex. Sex is viewed as the classification of male or female. It also covers a person's gender identity and sexual orientation. Additionally, the term sex covers pregnancy, childbirth, and other gender-related medical conditions. The Main Human Rights Commission is the state agency that enforces the Main Human Rights Act. The Act prohibits discrimination on the basis of protected class in employment, housing, places of public accommodation. Education and extension of credit. N H R A authorizes the commission to pursue remedies for unlawful information in court when necessary to enforce the Act. State law now requires employers to inform and train all employees on sexual harassment and its prevention. Under the law, your employer is required to display a poster regarding information about sexual harassment in a prominent and acceptable location in the workplace. Distribute information about sexual harassment to employees. And provide sexual harassment training to all supervisory and non-supervisory employees. Offensive conduct may include, but is not limited to, offensive jokes, slurs, epithets, or name-calling. Physical assault or threat, intimidation, ridicule or mockery, insults or put-downs, offensive objects or pictures. And interference with work performance. It's a beautiful day at Globeville Community College. Let's look at a few employees to assess the workplace culture. Harry is the only woman on the grounds crew of the college. The mound crew often say rude things about women and like to make fun of their delicate nature. They never make Harry at the butt of any of their jokes and claim that as their coworker, she's just one of the guys. Harry feels that the jokes have gotten a little out of hand and they are starting to make her uncomfortable. How could you address this? Select all that applied and click submit.
Anyone who wanna take any guesses here?
Employees should never ignore offensive behavior. The next time she hears these comments, she should inform her coworkers that their behavior is offensive, unwelcome, and must stop. This simple act of social discipline can alert friends or coworkers that they have crossed the line. If Harry does so and the behavior continues, she should report the harassment to prevent further escalation. Harry is hesitant to bring this to a supervisor's attention, so she researches workplace harassment laws. Which of the following will she learn? Select all that applied and click submit.
See you guys.
B and C.
Correct.
This is sexual harassment. Sexual harassment doesn't have to be sexual in nature, but can include any unwelcome conduct or remarks about a person's sex. You also do not have to be the person harassed to be affected by offensive conduct. Your employer has a legal responsibility to protect your own harassment, but they must know about the behavior in order to correct it. Many organizations have nondiscrimination or anti-harassment policies in place, as well as a complaint process or reporting system. The reporting system should be available to employees who experience harassment, as well as those who observe harassment. And should provide multiple avenues to report offensive conduct in a manner easily accessible to employees. Become familiar with your workplace anti-harassment policies. The outline practices know may help reduce the chance of bias and harassment at work. Supervisors are an important part of the reporting process. Anytime a supervisor or manager receives a report of harassment or is otherwise aware of harassment. It must be promptly reported to the employer without exception, even if no one is objecting to the harassment. Even if the supervisor or manager thinks the conduct is trivial, and even if the harassed individual asks that it not be reported. Behavior does not need to be a violation of law in order to be in violation of the organization's policy. Sexual harassment is considered a form of employee misconduct, and inappropriate comments that aren't discouraged can embolden further wrongdoing. Organizations must address offensive behaviors before they rise to the level of unlawful harassment. When Harry reports the behavior, her supervisor said that comes with the territory and suggests that she can deal with it herself. Why is this wrong? Select all that applied and click submit.
He said B. Is that it? Those three. Could be being disciplined and some, or demoted, denied a pay, pay increase. We good there? Oh, so it was B as well. Oh, not, not B.
Employers are obligated to conduct an effective workplace investigation of harassment in their plan. They are responsible for preventing harassment by non-supervatory employees, as well as non-employees over whom it has control. An employer can be held liable for harassment if it knew or should have known about the harassment and failed to take prompt and appropriate corrective action. As a supervisor, this means you must learn to be aware when people are alerting you to harassing behavior. How common is sexual harassment in the workplace? Sexual harassment does not simply mean sexual mistreatment of women in the workplace. It means mistreatment of any person due to gender-related expectations. An alarming number of employees experience sexual harassment or harassment because of sex. Unfortunately, most do not report it because they know it will be ignored or for fear of retaliation. Roughly three out of.
Oops.
Employees may choose not to report harassment if they.
But.
Fear that harassment. Don't lose all the good opinion of themselves. Fear they will face consequences for making waves or even because they don't realize the behavior is actually wrong. That's why it's important to know that sexual harassment, no matter how slight, is never okay. All complaints will be taken seriously and promptly investigated with effective action taken where appropriate.
In this section, we'll talk about different types of sexual harassment in the workplace. There are two main types of sexual harassment. Quid pro quo sexual harassment occurs when a person in authority trades or tries to trade job benefits for sexual favors. This type of harassment occurs between an employee and someone with authority and is used as a basis to grant or withhold job benefits. Quid pro quo sexual harassment can include offers or threats of changed work conditions, physical acts or pressure to enforce a relationship, or retaliation for refusing to engage in a sexual relationship. Hostile environment sexual harassment occurs when the work environment unreasonably interferes with an employee's ability to perform the job. Any employee can engage in this type of harassment. Hostile environment sexual harassment includes sexual or discriminatory displays or publications anywhere in the workplace, or any hostile actions taken against an individual because of that individual's sex. It's a beautiful day at Globeville's community center. Let's look in on a few employees and assess their behavior. Tessa can often sense that her supervisor, Leon, is looking her up and down. Leon gets very close to Tessa as often as he can. When she tries to move, he will sometimes get in her way. He has even asked her out for work. Tessa asks him to stop and requests that you treat her like every other employee. After that, Leon makes changes to her schedule, which interferes with her other responsibilities. When she complains, Leon says if she can't work the schedule he needs her to work, he's going to have to cut her hours. Leon changes her schedule and threatens to cut her hours after she asks him to stop. What's wrong with this? Select an option below, then click submit.
B.
Correct.
Harassment is illegal when it results in a tangible employment decision, such as the victim being fired, demoted, or in Tessa's case, a change in her schedule or pay. Employers are automatically liable for harassment by a supervisor that results in a tangible employment action. Additionally, by threatening to cut her pay, Leon is making matters worse by retaliating against Tessa for addressing the behavior. A tangible employment action is a job change that has a negative effect on the job or working conditions, such as firing, demotion, or suspension. Employers are strictly liable for harassment by a supervisor that results in a tangible or negative employment action. If this happens, employers do not get a chance to fix the situation before being held responsible for harassment. They will have to compensate for it. Retaliation is the act of punishing an applicant or employee for asserting his or her right to an harassment-free workplace. Retaliation can include termination, or evaluations, or decisions affecting pay, and is strictly prohibited by the EEOC. Is it sexual harassment when Leon looks at Tessa? Select an option below, then click submit.
B.
Correct.
Leon tells a male employee he has to look more masculine and his coworkers are going to see him as a professional. Is this sexual harassment? Select an option below, then click submit.
Correct.
This is sexual harassment because the remarks were about gender-related expectations, also known as sex stereotyping. Sexual harassment can occur between any individuals, regardless of their sex or gender. The victim, as well as the harasser, may be a woman or a man, and the victim does not have to be of the opposite sex. Sex stereotypes are generalized ideas about how individuals of either sex should act or look. When you treat someone differently because they are doing a job that was traditionally performed by the opposite sex, this is a form of sex discrimination. Being suspicious of an engineer's abilities because she's female or questioning why a male nurse would want to work around children are forms of sex stereotyping. Additionally, when one person tells another person that their behavior or personality trait is inappropriately masculine or feminine, this is sex stereotyping, and it is a form of sexual harassment. For example, if an employer fires an employee because she is married to a woman, but would not fire a man married to a woman, the employer is taking an action based on expectations about the employee's sex. Similarly, if supervisors refuse to use feminine pronouns for a female employee who was identified as male at birth, but will use feminine pronouns for a person identified as female at birth, the action only occurred because the employee was originally identified as male. Nobody should be expected to fit a stereotype. There is no single correct way that an individual of any sex should look or act. Which of the following statements or stereotypes that could impact a person's attitudes in the workplace? Select all that apply, then click submit.
A.
B.
D.
E.
Can call. I think it's always above.
Yeah.
All of these are stereotypes that can cause you to make inaccurate assumptions and mistreat coworkers. Annie, a gender-neutral employee begins working at the community center. Darnell and Harry discuss whether to use the pronoun he or she when referring to Annie. Which actions are appropriate in this situation? Select all that apply, then click submit.
A. C.
Gender expression is defined by the law to mean a person's gender-related appearance and behavior, other than not stereotypically associated with the person's assigned sex at birth. Gender expression is protected under Title VII, which means unwelcome treatment regarding an employee's gender identity is unlawful. Harry and Darnell could open a conversation with Annie to learn what pronouns are considered welcome or unwelcome. They should also respect Annie's identity rather than impose their own opinions about gender expression onto another person. When it comes down to it, one person's opinion about another person's gender is irrelevant in the workplace. Gender expression can vary greatly across culture, age, community, personality, style, and a sense of self. People should not ever have to justify their gender identity or expression. This is an unnecessary burden and it reinforces the notion of gender-specific behaviors. Regardless of our intention, we cannot treat people differently because they don't conform to a specific standard of gender. This is considered gender discrimination. Nora gets extra breaks at a quiet office based to pump breast milk after her pregnancy. Some people say this is special treatment. Are they victims of sexual harassment? Select an option below, then click submit.
B.
Correct.
Accommodations for gender-related conditions are like other accommodations in the workplace. They are provided for those who could be unreasonably inconvenienced by or experience a disparate impact from standard workplace protocol. Which of the following workplace behaviors would likely be considered sexual harassment? Select all that apply, then click submit.
B.
They ask.
Oh, when they ask, huh? Interesting.
They may get smothered with advocacy and maybe some politics.
They're asking.
Cards are decided that conduct is considered unwelcome if the employee did not solicit or instigate the conduct and regards the conduct as undesirable or offensive. Welcomeness depends on the attitude and values of a specific person. Some behavior can be welcomed by one person and unwelcome by another. However, to hold the employer liable under Title VII, the unwelcomingness must be communicated. The employer must be told about the harassment so it can evaluate and respond to the allegations. If you are experiencing harassment in the workplace, you have options and support when you decide to come forward. First, be sure the harasser knows you do not welcome these advances. If you feel comfortable doing so, tell the person who is harassing you to stop. If you do not feel comfortable confronting the harasser directly, or if the behavior does not stop, check to see if your employer has an anti-harassment policy. This may be on the employer's website. If it's not, check your employee handbook. The policy should give you various options for reporting the harassment, including the option of filing a complaint. If there is no policy, or you don't feel comfortable filing a formal complaint, talk with a supervisor. You can talk with your own supervisor, the supervisor of the person who is harassing you, or any supervisor in the organization. Explain what has happened and ask for that person's help in getting the behavior stopped. And finally, you always have an option of filing a charge of discrimination with the EEOC to complain about the harassment. Let's take a moment to review. Sexual harassment is illegal. Employers are responsible for providing a harassment-free workplace. Federal and state laws set minimum expectations for workplace behavior and hold employers accountable for meeting them. Sexual harassment does not have to be sexual in nature. It includes remarks or actions because of a person's sex or gender. In addition, both the victim and the harasser can be either a woman or man, and the victim and harasser can be the same sex. The harasser can be anyone you must interact with at your job, and you do not have to be the person harassed to file a complaint. Gender stereotypes are generalized ideas about how individuals of either sex should act or look. Sex stereotyping is a form of sexual harassment. Expecting a person to fit into a stereotype of masculine or feminine is a form of sex discrimination. There is no single way that an individual of any sex should act or look.
How many lessons are there?
This section will cover strategies to help prevent harassment in the workplace. The goal when addressing harassment is not just about avoiding liability. It's about prevention, which means correcting behavior before it ever rises to the level of illegality. This includes correcting petty slights or isolated incidents so employees understand that harassment at any level is not acceptable. Harassing behavior is often a reflection of an individual's attitudes or beliefs that are inconsistent with what is acceptable to others. But the good news is that people can override these thoughts and behave based on what is expected. Each person's behavior is continually shaped and guided by social influences. This means that ultimately, an employee's decision to engage in harassing behavior manifests due to a lack of consequence. By noticing offensive behavior before it ever rises to the level of unlawful conduct, we communicate that such behavior is always unacceptable. This will encourage employees to think twice before they act, which causes them to consistently evaluate their attitudes in relation to social expectations. The bottom line is, set a solid example and a change in attitude will follow. Without a doubt, prevention is the best tool to change behaviors and eliminate harassment in the workplace. As a supervisor, you can help prevent harassment. Speak up when you witness offensive behavior. Address petty slights or isolated incidents of offensive conduct, correct employee behavior as it occurs. Train employees to speak up against or report harassment. Encourage employees to use the complaint process. Take immediate and appropriate action when employee complains. And take steps to correct team culture. Employees can help set the tone for what is and is not acceptable in the workplace. Learn how to respond when employees make generalizing or negative statements. People can and do adjust their behavior after comments from their peers. Click each button to learn how you can respond. Challenge the statement. Say something in the moment to get the speaker to think about their statement. Respond later. Approach the person individually at a later time. How do you point out that this statement was inappropriate or unwelcome? Alert management. Let the organization know about any behavior that borders on harassment or discrimination. How can you, as a supervisor, work to prevent harassment? Select all that apply then click submit. Sexual harassment will not be tolerated. This means any harassing behavior will be investigated and the perpetrator or perpetrators to be told to stop. Although not intended as such, the term zero tolerance may inappropriately convey a one-size-fits-all approach in which every instance of harassment brings the same level of discipline. This in turn may contribute to employee underreporting of harassment, particularly where they do not want a colleague or coworker to lose their job over relatively minor harassing behavior. They simply want the harassment to stop. Accountability requires that discipline for harassment be proportionate to the offensiveness of the conduct. For example, sexual assault or demand for sexual favors in return for a promotion should presumably result in discrimination. But the continued use of derogatory or gender-based language after an initial warning might result in a suspension and the first report of telling sexist jokes may warrant a warning. Your organization must follow a sexual harassment prevention policy and investigate any claims. Once you submit a complaint or otherwise report harassment, the investigators will review allegations and take any initial actions. Request and review relevant documents or evidence. Interview all parties and witnesses. Make a determination and notify the complainant and the accused of a final determination and any action that has been taken. They will also document the entire investigation process. If you were ever personally accused of harassment, take the complaint seriously and cooperate with investigative personnel. Don't try to handle the matter yourself. Don't try to make the accusation go away through threats or false information and never retaliate. This section will discuss other types of harassment and inappropriate behavior in the workplace. Sexual harassment is not the only kind of harassment. Any harassment or discrimination based on a protected characteristic is prohibited in the workplace and may lead to disciplinary action against the perpetrator. Much of the information presented in this training can be applied to all types of workplace harassment. According to the EEOC, a protected class is a group or characteristic that is by law protected from employment discrimination. Applicants, employees, and former employees in the United States are protected from employment discrimination based on race, color, religion, sex, including sexual orientation, gender identity and pregnancy, national origin, age, forty or older, disability, and genetic information including family medical history. Individual states and local ordinances have passed additional laws that add to the federal protection. Check to see if there's data on city protects against other types of discriminations. Individual states have passed additional laws that add to the federal protections. Federal laws have the highest authority and apply within all states and territories. Individual state and local laws extend protections beyond the federal laws to areas within their jurisdiction. In Maine, employees are also protected from discrimination on the basis of ancestry, protected activity under the Maine Whistleblowers Protection Act, and filing a fire claim under the Workers' Compensation Act. Interceptional harassment is harassment or discrimination that occurs because of a person's connection to more than one protected class. It has been recognized that certain protected groups overlap, and negative stereotypes or biases may be directed at more than one protected base at a time. This increases the level of discrimination or harassment in individuals. Gabriel's manager Stephanie keeps checking on him to see when a project will be finished. Her comments about his work ethic and time management are increasingly rude and derogatory. He begins to get irritated and tells her he can't get anything done with her harassing him. Is this unlawful harassment? Select an option below, then click Submit. In everything language, the term harassment is often used to mean nagging or irritating. This may be annoying, but it is not illegal. For harassing behavior to be unlawful, the offensive conduct must be related to a protected class and create a hostile work environment. However, behavior that doesn't meet the definition of unlawful harassment can still be considered highly inappropriate. Everyone should strive to prevent abusive behavior in the workplace. Which of the following are examples of harassment in the workplace? Select all that apply, then click Submit.
A and B. No, I think just A and B.
A and B, let's see. Nope. D as well.
This section will cover your responsibilities as a supervisor to identify complaints, report harassment to your employer, and create a culture of prevention on your team. Supervisors play a special role in enforcing the anti-harassment policy. You are looked to as a leader by employees and provide an important link in the chain of command for the organization. Complaints about harassing behavior are often made to supervisors with the expectation that the issue will be addressed. As a supervisor, you are required to report any information about discrimination or harassment to your human resources department or representative promptly so they can address complaints with immediate and appropriate action. It is important to create an environment where employees feel free to raise concerns and trust that those concerns will be addressed. Because supervisors represent the employer and have the power to make decisions that affect employees, employers are legally accountable for supervisor behavior. Employers are subject to liability for unlawful harassment by supervisors based on two principles. An employer is responsible for the acts of its supervisors, and employers should be encouraged to prevent harassment. Supervisors have a legal responsibility to provide a workplace free from harassment, but you are not expected to address incidents of harassment on your own. As a supervisor, you are expected to actively prevent harassment by correcting petty slights and modeling expected behavior. Recognize when employees are uncomfortable or alerting you to harassing behavior, and report any information about discrimination or harassment promptly. Human resources representatives are specially trained in handling harassment appropriately. The ultimate goal is to stop harassment. This means addressing it in a way that helps everyone. Discipline should be a way to help employees grow. When you address harassment in the early stages, there is an opportunity for training. This fixes inappropriate behaviors before they turn into costly mistakes. It also prevents harsher, more negative discipline for escalated behavior. Addressing harassment early also sets a tone of prevention. Employees will feel free to raise small concerns, and when you hold employees accountable for professional behavior, they will hold others accountable as well. Who can be harmed by harassment? Select all that apply, then click Submit.
All of them? Oh. I'm sorry. Really. I clicked one of them.
You're gonna make us take this over.
No, 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 this is not.
Discrimination.
The test comes at the very end.
So harassment, even petty slights, can harm victims both emotionally and professionally. The harasser can face professional or legal consequences. Plus, employers and supervisors can be held personally and financially liable for unlawful harassment. It is important to stop inappropriate behavior before it leads to a costly mistake that harms everyone involved. Harassing behavior can be unconscious, and sexual harassment is not always due to sexism or prejudice. Harassment because of sex often occurs when we unconsciously rely on stereotypes to make a decision. For example, choosing a different tone of words to speak to men and women, or deciding on the amount of trust to give a female employee when the job is typically done by a man. To prevent harassment, we must learn to recognize the tendency to categorize people and avoid acting on assumptions. It's a beautiful day in downtown Globeville. Let's look in on a few city employees to assess the workplace culture. Madeline, a supervisor at the state hospital, finds a handwritten message from a female employee mentioning unequal treatment by a male supervisor, Louise. The author says he treats her differently than the men, and she doesn't receive the same recognition. She knows this may seem petty, but she's fed up and just wanted to vent. Louise is a great supervisor, and Madeline doesn't want to get in trouble for no reason, so she asks her on to help her decide if she should report the information. Which of Madeline's responses were inappropriate? Select all that apply, then click Submit.
B. C. Right.
A supervisor's responsibility in this situation is to make sure human resources is aware of the complaint so they can investigate in the appropriate manner. It does not matter if the complaint is anonymous, inconsistent with her opinion or observations, or doesn't follow the reporting process. She should not try to investigate the complaint herself, nor should she consider withholding the complaint to protect Louise. If the investigation uncovers no wrongdoing, Louise will not face consequences. By reporting immediately, she would be alerting her employer of possible harassment while honoring confidentiality and displaying faith in the reporting process that human resources is specifically designed to handle. Information about harassment should always be treated as confidential unless advised by human resources. This will prevent rumors and protect the investigation process. If you have any information regarding a complaint or investigation, do not inform others that an investigation is occurring and do not share details about the alleged harassment or participants. This includes talking with other supervisors, clarifying rumors, or answering questions about the situation without the approval of HR. If you hear others discussing the incident, do stop the conversation about the incident to prevent rumors from spreading. Madeline debated reporting to protect Louise from consequences. Why is this a problem? Select all that apply, then click Submit.
B. C. D.
Correct.
As a supervisor, Madeline has a responsibility to protect her employees as well as her employer. Ignoring a complaint to protect an alleged harasser from consequence allows the behavior to continue and opens the hospital to liability. Considering other factors such as accomplishments or job status can cause the fact that the behavior is in fact delinquent. Just because Louise is good at his job or is the friend of Madeline's does not change whether some of his behavior is unlawful, that other employees are affected by the work environment, or that the hospital could be held accountable. Liability is an employer's responsibility by law. Once it is determined that harassment has occurred, employers will be required to fix the problems though it does not happen in the future. They can also be required to pay for damages. This applies to employers as well as individuals. Strict liability. Employers are called accountable for harassment in the workplace and will be responsible for damages from supervisor harassment that results in a tangible employment action. Personal liability. Supervisors and coworkers can also be held legally responsible for acts of unlawful harassment or retaliation and may be subject to both civil and criminal penalties. A few days later, Madeline is chatting with Gilbert when Louise walks by. Gilbert rolls his eyes and says, "That guy is the worst. He makes so many people uncomfortable." Do you think Gilbert is alerting Madeline to harassment? Select an option below, then click Submit.
C.
What do you folks think?
It's B and C.
Correct.
When alerting management to harassment, employees rarely use words like sexual harassment or unlawful behavior. This means you must be able to recognize when an employee is informing you of harassment. Pay close attention if an employee describes a feeling of uneasiness within the workplace. How should Madeline respond? Select all that apply, then click Submit.
B.
Yes, all.
Pick all of them?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So don't tell the Richmond.
Supervisors are obligated to receive complaints from any employees within the organization, not just direct reports. Employees may not feel comfortable reporting harassment to a direct supervisor and should have a variety of options. If employees make comments like, "He makes people uncomfortable." "I try to avoid her," or "His jokes are kind of inappropriate." Supervisors should move the conversation to a private location and ask for more details. If any information points toward harassment, she should stop asking for details and mention the conversation to HR. Not only does this show concern for your employees, but it will also allow you to identify and address problems appropriately. Which of these statements might be an attempt to tell you about sexual harassment? Select all that apply, then click Submit.
It's C. A. B.
What was that?
C.
C?
B.
What did you say?
B.
You think B?
Yeah.
Yes, assistant.
No. He asked his assistant.
Yeah, why not? Might be an attempt to tell you about... I would say that.
I would think that, like if you... Why is an assistant for telling?
This is a terrible example.
Well, if it's an assistant, you don't know if it's a male or female.
This one?
Assistant taking notes.
And he thinks it's funny.
Which of the statements might be an attempt to tell you about sexual harassment?
One key outrun by identifying sexual harassment. This will give us a way to increase welcome. It's best for business when taking complaints of harassment. Select each button to learn more. The first step in taking the complaint is to recognize when someone is alerting you to harassment. Employees themselves may be unaware that the behavior is harassment, so pay attention at any times someone mentions feelings of unease at work. To ensure privacy, move the conversation to an office or close the door so you can't be overheard. This shows concern for your employees. Ask questions to identify problems and determine if the information needs to be reported. When an employee alerts you of harassment, be compassionate and supportive. Thank them for letting you know, and tell them it will be handled appropriately. You are required to protect employee confidentiality when taking complaints of harassment. Do not discuss any details about the complaint. Follow the reporting process to alert the employer and protect everyone involved. Confidentiality is important when preventing harassment and will be maintained to the extent possible. This protects employees and builds trust. However, you cannot guarantee complete confidentiality when taking a complaint of harassment. You as a supervisor are not allowed to keep knowledge of harassment from the employer, and your employer cannot conduct an effective investigation without revealing certain information to the alleged harasser and potential witnesses. Confidentiality requirements will be determined by case-by-case basis. The primary purpose of a sexual harassment policy is not to punish employees, but to prevent violations. This can be done by making sure that your employees understand the policy and note that they are encouraged to speak up or mention inappropriate behaviors. To do this, you can set a tone that encourages employees to mention inappropriate practices or behaviors. When employees know they will be held accountable, they will monitor their own behavior. Empower employees to prevent harassment themselves by teaching them ways to speak up against inappropriate behavior. Enhance good behavior. Speak up to address petty slights or isolated incidents as they occur. This sets an example that employees will follow. Javier works as a facilities manager for Globeville City College. One day, he overhears Scott and Victor talking about an uncomfortable incident involving Rita and another supervisor. They all went out for a happy hour, and the supervisor was overly friendly with Rita. He had his arms all over her, and nobody knew how to respond. Rita speaks up sheepishly. "Guys, it's not that big a deal. Plus, we were off the clock. Please, don't say anything." Based on his observations, what is Javier's responsibility in this situation? Select an option below, then click Submit.
Correct.
Javier should report his observations to human resources even though there has been no direct complaint of harassment. Even outside of work, supervisors have a responsibility to act professionally. If there was harassing behavior directed towards someone on his staff, it is Javier's responsibility to protect his staff, Rita, and his employer, the city. A person's body language can alert you to inappropriate or unwelcome behavior in the workplace. Many people have learned not to say anything about harassment even when they don't really want to hide. Some warning signs of a troubled person include, but are not limited to, facial expressions of fear or nervousness, avoiding eye contact, crossed arms or slumped shoulders, a change in behavior or patterns, including social isolation or increased use of sick days, or a sudden or unpredictable change in general mood or energy level. These signs don't always indicate harassment, but they can be an indication of discontent. Respectfully asking questions will help you identify problems that may need to be addressed. Also, remember that your own body language can either encourage or deter employees from being open with you. Anything that could be considered harassment must be brought to your employer's attention. If you know about it, it is expected that whole leadership at the workplace should also know about it. Javier does the right thing by reporting the information, but he is concerned. All three employees involved seem to be powerless, and the situation would never have been reported if he had not happened to hear the conversation. What else could Javier have done to create an environment of prevention? Select all that apply, then click Submit.
B. C. D. E.
It is HR's job to investigate reports of harassment, but it is part of a supervisor's job to make sure employees feel they can share information about harassment. Javier could have spoken up in the moment to support Scott and Victor's concern about the behavior and inform his employees that the behavior was not okay. He could also emphasize that it is always okay to speak up against or report harassment. Later that day, Rita stops by to talk. She has realized that the situation really wasn't okay. She asks for advice but asks him not to tell anyone else. What should Javier consider? Select all that apply, then click Submit.
E.
Tell it?
C.
Correct.
As his supervisor, Javier has a responsibility to his employer to report any information about harassment. It does not matter that Rita asked him not to report the information. If he knows about it, the employer must be informed. He can also show support to relieve her fears without reporting the behavior. Employees who experience harassment often choose not to file a complaint because they fear disbelief of their claim, inaction of their claim, blame, or social or professional retaliation. Scott, Victor, and Rita all have positive things to say about their job this week. While they were all involved in an uncomfortable situation, each person came away with the outlook that they were valued. They each feel more comfortable speaking up, and each of them expresses that Javier and the HR team really make it a great place to work. Remember that it is not your responsibility to investigate and discipline acts of harassment. You can set the tone and speak... You can set the tone and speak up when you notice petty slights that could lead to harassment if unchecked, but once an act of harassment has occurred, the employer must know so it can be handled appropriately. Use different strategies at the appropriate time to set the tone and model correct behavior in the workplace. Select each button to learn more. Challenge the statement in the moment, when it is important to set an example for everyone involved. However, it is important to do this in a way that allows people to learn from your advice rather than become defensive. When you address behavior later, you can express the importance of growth with your employee. This approach allows for privacy, shows concern, and helps to prevent employees from becoming defensive. Any behavior that is unlawful must be reported. This demonstrates accountability for a harassment-free workplace, allows behavior to be addressed appropriately, and prevents further incidents. Let's review. As a supervisor, you are expected to report any information about discrimination or harassment promptly. Follow the reporting process outlined in your sexual harassment policy or employee handbook. It is not your responsibility to address harassment. It is your responsibility to make sure employees feel safe reporting it. Supervisors have to set the tone that complaints will be taken seriously and encourage employees to mention inappropriate behavior so it can be addressed. You must also be able to recognize when an employee is alerting you of harassment. Employees rarely use terms like unlawful harassment when making a complaint. Pay attention when employees mention feelings of unease around the workplace. Maintain confidentiality to prevent rumors and protect the investigation process. Do not discuss the information you have received with anyone aside from your Human Resources Department or representative. However, you may not keep knowledge of harassment from your employer.
In this section, you will learn how to identify and avoid a specific type of harassment called retaliation. Retaliation against someone who opposes discrimination is a form of harassment. To retaliate means to attack or assault in return. In the workplace, this being treated someone differently or unfavorably because they oppose harassment. Under federal and state Equal Employment Opportunity laws, it is illegal to retaliate against a person because the person complained about discrimination, filed a charge of discrimination, or participated in an investigation or lawsuit. Additionally, employers are responsible for preventing or stopping harassment by other employees. You are protected against retaliation. Asserting your rights is called unprotected activity. It's unlawful to treat applicants or employees differently for filing or being a witness in an EEO charge, complaint, investigation, or lawsuit. Communicating with a supervisor or manager about employment discrimination, including harassment. Answering questions during an employer investigation of alleged harassment. Refusing to follow orders that would result in discrimination. Resisting sexual advances or intervening to protect others. Requesting the combination of a disability or a religious practice. Or asking managers or coworkers about salary information to uncover potentially discriminatory wages.
When she complained that our new dress code policy was discriminatory, my first thought was to transfer her to a different department, but then I realized I would be punishing her for making sure our policies were fair and law-abiding. Good thing I thought through my reasoning and avoided retaliation.
The EEOC has reported that each year retaliation is a common issue alleged by public employees in the most common discrimination finding in federal sector cases. Retaliation has outpaced other cases of discrimination and is included in over half of the discrimination findings. In many of these cases, it is common that the original discrimination allegation results in a finding of no wrongdoing, but the retaliation that people experience afterward results in a discrimination finding. An employee who had filed several unsuccessful EEO complaints sought vengeance within our organization. The employee learned that her manager had placed information about the previous EEO proceedings in her personnel file and communicated this information when contacted for reference check. Upon investigation, the EEOC found that the statements made during the reference check were retaliatory and further that the information placed in the employee's personnel file was unnecessary and hindered her promotional opportunities. An employer is not allowed to take any action in response to an unprotected activity that would discourage someone from resisting or complaining about future discrimination. If someone participates in a harassment complaint or investigation, it could be retaliation too. Reprimand the employee or give a performance evaluation that is lower than it should be. Transfer the employee to a less desirable position. Engage in verbal or physical abuse. Threaten to make or actually make reports to authorities, such as reporting immigration status or contacting employees. Increase scrutiny. Spread false rumors. Treat a family member negatively. For example, cancel a contract with a person's spouse. Or make the person's work more difficult. For example, punishing an employee for an EEO complaint by purposely changing his work schedule to conflict with family responsibilities. Your employer is responsible for creating a harassment-free workplace, and this includes retaliation. All employees are protected from retaliation, including victims, reporters, witnesses, and employees who have been disciplined for harassment. Then is alerted to allegations that you made rude comments about lesbians. He gets to make the comments and is given a warning. He also agrees not to discuss the situation. Which of the following acts would be retaliation? Select all that apply and click submit.
A.
Oh, no, A's not, no. I read that.
I'm sorry, say that again? B? So we think B and D? Nope, A is what? Yeah?
It is retaliation for any employee to punish or treat any individual differently because of their involvement in a harassment complaint. Everyone is protected from retaliation whether they are the victim, reporter, witness, or harasser. It is not retaliation to remind all employees about workplace expectations or improve behavior in general. After an investigation, it is common for organizations to communicate expectations to everyone and see an overall improvement around the workplace. Supervisors have a responsibility to stop, address, and prevent retaliation. To prevent retaliation during and after a complaint investigation, do not share information about the EEO activity with any other managers or subordinates. Avoid publicly discussing the allegation. Avoid reactive behaviors such as denying the employee information, equipment, or benefits provided to others performing similar duties. Be mindful not to isolate the employee. Do not threaten the employee, witnesses, or anyone else involved in the processing of a complaint. Do not interfere with the investigation process. Provide clear and accurate information to the EEO staff, investigators, or judge, and watch for signs of retaliation from other employees. It's a beautiful day at Globeville's Department of Transportation. Let's look in on a few employees to assess the workplace culture. Sebastian, a well-liked employee, is fired for sexual harassment. Coworkers find out that Aaron was a witness in the investigation and start avoiding him from the office. They now ignore his contributions in meetings and talk about him behind his back, saying they don't want to work with someone and get their friends fired. Aaron knows his coworkers are treating him differently than before, but he's not sure if he should say anything. He already feels uneasy about his participation in the investigation, and he doesn't want to draw any more negative attention to himself. One important thing for him to know. Select all that apply and click submit.
C.
B and C?
Correct.
The harassment Aaron is facing from his coworkers can due to the fact that he participated in a harassment investigation. This is retaliation, which is unlawful behavior for any employee, not just supervisors. The employer can be held responsible if they do not correct employee actions that result in a hostile work environment. Aaron's coworkers are retaliating. What factors could be contributing to this behavior? Select all that apply and click submit.
All of them.
Correct.
Now, all of these factors could contribute to retaliatory behavior, but workplace culture has the greatest impact on a wrong harassment flourish, or conversely, in preventing harassment. To stop retaliation, employers must train employees to recognize and respond to retaliatory impulses and set the tone that employees will be held accountable for these behaviors. If you are aware of a harassment complaint or investigation, watch for signs that your employees are retaliating so you can address it quickly. It could be retaliation today. Avoid, exclude, or ignore an employee involved in the investigation. Ridicule them for their participation in the investigation, or spread rumors or make false accusations. That's a tone on your team that you expect employees to take harassment complaints seriously, but mincemeat is behind them and always backed professionally. The act of retaliation is equivalent to revenge, where a person perceives unfair treatment and attempts to restore equilibrium by taking the matter into his or her own hands. Research has consistently demonstrated that the desire for retaliation is common upon experiencing an offensive interpersonal encounter, particularly if the encounter threatens one's self-esteem. However, humans are unique in their ability to weigh consequences, make decisions to override instinct, and behave based on what is socially or legally acceptable. As a supervisor, it is extremely important that you not only recognize your own inclination to retaliation, but also recognize the possibility and likelihood that other employees may engage in retaliatory behavior. At the psychological level, researchers have found that a variety of personality traits are associated with retaliation. For example, researchers have suggested that those with a sense of entitlement to experience offenses much more emotionally than others and take them much more personally. As such, these individuals are more likely to ruminate over the offense, ultimately seeking retaliation. Similarly, authoritarian personalities, people who place a high value on status in group settings, are predisposed to retaliation when offended, particularly if that offense is from someone of subordinate status. Extroverts, on the other hand, are much more likely to seek non-aggressive resolution in conflict situations, forgiving offenders in an attempt to salvage a relationship. Such individuals are less likely to ruminate and seek retaliation. Researchers have also concluded that people seek retaliation when they feel the workplace is not fair and that they cannot depend on formal channels for fair or just treatment. Individuals will also retaliate if they perceive a perpetrator's behavior is intentionally malicious. Individuals are also more likely to retaliate if the accusation is very serious. The accusation will negatively impact future relationships with others at work. The accused feels that he or she is being judged. The accused believes that his or her job is in jeopardy, or there is reason to believe that the accusation will harm perceived employability. Aaron goes to his supervisor, Diana, about the behavior. She says he is being too sensitive, but also sees this as an opportunity. She needs to adjust staffing in another area, so she transfers Aaron. She feels like this is one solution that solves two problems. Why is this wrong? Select all that apply and click submit.
A and C?
What's such A and Gs?
B, A, B, and C? And C? No, all of them.
All of them.
Because, why is this law?
The EEO laws prohibit punishing or discouraging employees for asserting their rights to be free from employment discrimination, including harassment. In this case, Aaron's reassignment could be perceived as punishment and sets a workplace tone that may discourage other employees from resisting or complaining about future harassment. But first and foremost, it is important for Diana to realize that transferring Aaron does nothing to address the actual problem of harassment. A job transferred due to his complaints is not only retaliatory, it is allowing harassment to continue. Without addressing the retaliation, her employees are not likely to correct their behavior. Aside from the business aspect, Diana's actions also have legal issues. Why do Diana's actions create liability for the organization? Select all that apply and click submit. Employers are responsible for creating a harassment-free workplace and can be held liable for supervisor actions. By attempting to alert the organization of continued harassment, Diana does not give them a chance to correct the retaliation. In addition, by attempting to address harassment without the support of HR, a tangible employment action would occur and create strict liability for the organization as well as personal liability for herself. Her responses did nothing to address the employee harassment and even placed blame on the complainant to actions that might deter a reasonable person from opposing harassment in the future. What should Diana have done when Aaron came to her with a complaint of retaliation? Select an option below then click submit.
So looking for only one answer. What'd you say? Yeah?
Diana's responsibilities in this situation are to report any information to HR and to make sure employees feel comfortable reporting discrimination. She should also treat Aaron the same as before. The EEOC can interpret a changing behavior as retaliatory. Diana should also consult with HR before reassigning Aaron to a new position, and HR representatives can help her determine whether or not the job change is an appropriate business decision. Budget cuts have led to layoffs in Diana's recruitment. She assumes that since Aaron made a harassment complaint, he will be protected from termination. Is this correct? Select an option below and click submit.
No.
Engaging in EEO activity does not protect an employee from all discipline or discharge. Employers are still free to discipline or terminate workers for normal business reasons. However, since Aaron has been involved in an EEO allegation, it would be wise for Diana to work closely with HR in this case. They can help her document the process to support her actions. Which of the following behaviors could be considered retaliation as a result of Aaron's complaint? Select all that apply and click submit. Retaliation significantly contributes to the automatic harassment. Employees who experience harassment commonly fail to report their harassing behavior or file a complaint because they worry about disbelief, blame, or social or professional retaliation. To prevent harassment in the workplace, we must address the reality and to vary retaliation. In addition to what we've already outlined, you may also choose to pursue outside legal remedies if faced with harassment in the workplace. If someone feels they have been discriminated against, they can file a complaint with the main Human Rights Commission. To start the process, fill out the intake form online or call to a trusted forum. Once a complaint is filed and the MHRS staff reviews the claim, parties will be informed and have a chance to settle the matter prior to a commission finding. If the terms of the settlement agreement are met, the matter is administratively dismissed. If settlement is not achieved, a preliminary investigation will be conducted to determine whether there are reasonable grounds to believe discrimination occurred. If reasonable grounds do exist, the commission will attempt to conciliate or If reasonable grounds do exist, the commission will attempt to conciliate or resolve a case by agreement. However, if the commission's finding does not result in any relief being awarded, the complainant may file suit regardless of the commission's finding. If you feel you've been discriminated against or wish to report sexual harassment, contact the main Human Rights Commission. Visit the MHRC website or speak with an intake officer by phone or in person at the MHRC office. You may also choose to contact the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission. Anti-discrimination laws give you a limited amount of time to file a charge of discrimination. When filing in Maine, please note that the MHRC requires all complaints to be filed within 300 days of the date of discrimination. If you wish to file federal aid, an individual working in Maine can file a complaint with the EEOC anytime within 300 days from the alleged sexual harassment. You do not need to have an attorney to file. A complaint must be filed with the EEOC before you can file in federal court. Let's review. Retaliation is a form of harassment that creates a hostile work environment. Retaliation due to a person's involvement in a harassment complaint or investigation is unlawful. Under the law, a manager may not fire, demote, harass, or otherwise retaliate against an individual for filing a complaint or otherwise opposing discrimination. This includes any employer action that might deter a reasonable person from reporting harassment. The fear of retaliation significantly contributes to the problem of harassment. To prevent harassment, we must also prevent retaliation. Speak up when you witness poor behavior. Correct petty, blind, or isolated individuals, report harassment to your employer, and encourage the complaint process. Employers and supervisors are responsible for preventing harassment, including retaliation. If you feel you've been discriminated against, file a complaint with HR or the EEOC. Do you have any questions about what you've learned? Contact a supervisor or human resources representative to begin discussion and present your questions.
All right, now, Roy, is the test. Oh, actually, I've already taken this test. This is a microphone. So we'll just, we'll just, we'll just edit this.
In our case, you and our attorney essentially would be.
Yes, let me hit the lights and then we'll.
Is that from HR? I mean, from MMA?
Well, I mean, as far as we're reporting.
Huge chair.
Right, and then I would.
Are all these videos on their website?
So, so if you folks were to receive a complaint of some sort of harassment, then I would advise you to bring that to me and then I will begin working with our attorney to address that, to make sure we're in compliance both with the law and best practices and the resolution of that issue. And to answer your question, Linda, this is part of the MMA's online university, so I created profiles for all you folks on there. And they have hundreds of training videos, so if you're interested in something, then you can jump on there, and some of them are, some of them are as short as like five minutes, but some of them are, I guess, an hour or so. So, anyway.
So get on there, we, what do we have to do?
Uh, let's talk about it offline.
Thank you. Thank you for doing a lot. All right, so we will move on to other business. That was time. Thank you all for removing the harassment treaty. Uh, I hope to get all the comments. If there anyone in the audience, I would like to come to the podium. Thomas.
Thank you.
No harassment, so.
I'm just gonna say, I don't know what to say. Other than, the people drink alone. And, to America, there's a problem. Even made a special appointment in front of me for the last year. And, uh, thank you. Actually, I made an appointment with Aaron and asked if he could turn over the, uh, ordinance that we were changing in regards to roles. And she was very kind, and he did that. He was very kind to let me know when the meeting was going to be. I hope somebody made contact with you people, which is a long way tonight to apologize. I guess when I contacted, within twenty minutes of that, the flu, the real, definitely flu. We were so upset, we couldn't even call anybody for a while. Finally, we called Evan quickly, he came, and one of the last things I remember saying to him as we headed to the hospital was, "Be sure, somebody knows that I'm not there because I'm scared."
He sent me a message, and I didn't pass it off.
I don't know, but all I can say is, I apologize. I apologize to you for the time that you spent with him, it was wonderful. And the only thing I wanted to say at that meeting was, I thought it was a good, good, um, ordinance, but you don't know. I would like to be pretty, just under there. I'm just getting permission. Deepo, you have earned your money tonight. You got it, plus I don't know what else to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so no apologies necessary, Mrs. Thomas, we're here to help. And I enjoyed our conversation, and at the next meeting, these folks will be discussing that ordinance in more depth and may even vote to approve it. Yeah, I'm gonna whiz through this quickly because it's been a long night, so I spent four hours this morning with Nick and some of our department directors going through departmental budgets. I've never felt more alive, so just so you know, work is, is going on on the budget, uh, as we speak. I'm curious if there's any interest among you in trading all of this paper that we distribute to you on a monthly, but on a, I guess, bi-weekly basis for iPads, where you would come to the meeting, bring your iPad, your agenda would be loaded on all your materials. You could use it to access your emails. So, if you're interested in that, that's something I think that we could afford to do and maybe save a few trees in the process.
Yeah, three. Zero.
You have zero interest?
Zero. I like it. You can read this.
Well, and, but, if anybody else out there is interested.
Yeah, I don't care either.
For one, I can handle the guy, that's why I'm not using it.
Well.
Took me ten years to learn how to use it, Andrew.
Well, I only want to get them if, if people want them and use them, so.
I'm good with the paper right now.
Okay, so if any, if, if anyone's, if anyone's interested, let me know and we will pursue that, so we'd be happy to move into the, uh,
That's right, they did that in the twenty-first century. I understand my texts.
Um, tomorrow, uh, we will be engaging in negotiations with one of our collective hiring units. So I imagine at our next meeting, we'll have some sort of date to present, to present to you, preventing that. Speaking of the next meeting, you'll have to, excuse me, I have a chest cold, girl. Uh, what we have on the agenda for the next meeting is the superintendent's gonna be here to do a preliminary budget presentation for you. She's actually gonna be presenting to the, uh, school board on a Wednesday night this week, and then she'll be here to present to you the following Monday. Uh, as I mentioned, we'll be looking at that water discharge ordinance that we previously discussed. We'll have the first reading on that and on the amendment to the General Assistance Ordinance that we talked about previously. And so, if you, and both of those have been vetted by the attorney, and so if you folks are fine with that, then you might even want to wait the second reading and then the changes would take effect thirty days hence. Uh, also at the next meeting, do you recall the program MD3 that the county launched last year? Uh, and it was a pretty expensive endeavor, but it involved some physicians who would, um, go out on the scenes along with paramedics and EMTs. Well, the medical director of that, Dr. Tim Payne, uh, is going to be here. He's been a, uh, ER physician at Maine General. He's gonna be here just to give you folks a presentation about that program and, and what it is, and so I've asked Chief Bustle. It is, it is, and so, um, yeah, so, uh, Chief Bustle's gonna be here as well, uh, for that, because they've had some interactions, but went for ambulance in MD3. Uh, and then, as with the historical society, tonight, the Food Pantry will be here to make their legislative presentation and request to you. So, and that's all.
Counselor comments?
Yeah. Two things, Paul, can I? Only to add on what we're talking about, and regarding that, Stan, or I've stated, I've seen what would the payment structure look like with also $1.8 million?
Okay, we'll look into that.
I mean, considering, you know, I don't think it's true, but that they would be like, you know, what would the cost? And the next thing is, I think, I don't throw money down in the history of the patient in nineteen, I think people, sidewalks, they're better than any other town, I've been in, you know, the commonest sidewalks. The one thing I would like to knock down with them, so we look at is down on the livery on that wall. Where they say, maybe see water in, or that water can't get out, it looks like we pushed the snow and a big pile of on the wall. It's probably gonna be smart as a mill, so they can't get away from that wall, so maybe have a town crew to go down and remove it. Not saying they get anything wrong, but I just know, um, that's history, they have a market escape, so if that's those block, yeah, as it melts, it's gonna run back towards the library.
Noted and noted. So, when it comes to the, uh, to the payment structure on the fire truck, I think it's gonna be something really important that we've really gotta focus on during this budget season is, you know, we've still got that $2 million in the, uh, unassigned fund balance for capital reserves, and we need to start prioritizing how we want to divvy that up among some of those capital reserves, so. Um, in fact, one of the rental budgets that we went over today was Public Works, and as you might imagine, Kevin's already thinking about capital projects for, for Public Works, and so I'm gonna see if, if he feels like he's ready. If not the next meeting, then the meeting after, just to come and give you guys a briefing on what he feels like the capital priorities are for Public Works, just so you don't get the gears turning as to how we might want to divvy up some of that money.
Well, we're along those lines with the library. Did you give an update on the library elevator?
Yeah, I, did I, I think I texted something out. Maybe a week or two ago.
We're still waiting for these.
Oh, you know what? Actually, speaking of Androids, I'm having an issue when I, I have an iPhone, and when I text from this building to an Android, it doesn't, and so I noticed it hadn't, then I didn't hit retry again after I left the building, but. The library elevator is now working. Is anyone familiar with the classic rock song Slow Ride? You may want to have it playing in your garden when you step onto that elevator, but it is working in its operational, uh, Richard actually sent me a, a video of him riding in it last week. It's only one floor, but it, it took its time. But it is working.
The one thing I wanted to say about that is, I want what you're saying. I'm I guess, shall I be an overreaction to them? They said absolutely nothing about keeping the technical structures. Nothing. I mean, if, if someone comes to you as a classman and makes a complaint, you know, you need to write down date, time, and where they're going. You need a record.
Yeah, and, um.
It shocks that they didn't do that up.
You, you're, you're correct, and all those things need to be documented, and so I can just tell you, and s- some of the employment issues that I've worked with our attorney on, it's all written down and documented as to who said what, when, and where.
I mean, put down the record, it's often looked at by the court as stronger and more critical evidence than just statements, writing kind of note to you on a record online, you know.
Yeah, agreed.
I was gonna say, more of the storms coming, that last year we had put the dirt down by a tennis court, and they didn't do it work there, so I didn't want to reach out to Ken and see what if he had thoughts about where we could have it, where to be accessed.
So you want to resurrect the Floyd Wayman Memorial Dirt?
Well, it's already my flag, and before we hear about it.
Okay.
Can you, sir, any motion to adjourn?
The move.
That's not James' consent.
James, all right, all on paper?
What do you want to make of this?
Thank you.
I need to see, we're gonna shut this thing on.
Hold on, let me.
All right, we'll see you guys later.